This is Dr Moore, can you hear me? Good evening, Mr Richmond.
Good evening, Dr Moore.
Okay, thank you Joseph.
Everyone, I'd like to motion, have a motion to enter into closed session.
Let me read this.
Yes, you can read that first if you don't mind, and then we'll go into closed session.
The board will enter closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318 Point 11, subsection A1, A3, A5, and A6 to consult with the board attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege to consider confidential personal matters and to prevent the disclosure of confidential 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 personal information under North Carolina General Statute 115C 319.
Okay, do I have a motion now to move into closed session?
Motion to go into closed session.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And Mr. Atherton, are you there?
Yes.
All right, we will move into closed session and be back shortly.
Forgot Ryan. We're good? Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 6th meeting of the Orange County Board of Education. We are back into open session, so I will read the public charge. "The Orange County Board of Education pledges to its citizens to conduct its business in a courteous and productive manner, showing respect for fellow board members, staff, and citizens. The Board asks its citizens to conduct themselves with the same courtesy toward both school personnel and each other. A moment of silence will be observed before each meeting. In addition to the moment of silence, the Board will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. The Board asks that you check your cell phones and other electronic devices to be certain that they are either turned off or on vibrate to avoid interruption of this meeting." At this time, we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. We will now observe our moment of silence. Thank you all. At this time, we will move into our recognitions. Mr. Smith, or I'm not real sure who is that? Kevin?
Good evening, Board, and Dr. Merrill Superintendent, members of the community. Every year, the Office of Exceptional Children at the Department of Public Instruction asks each school system to submit an educator of excellence for recognition at our state fall conference. This year, I am so, so pleased to be able to introduce you to Ms. Bryn Luter. She is one of our special education teachers at Eflin Cheeks Elementary School. I'm going to step away and let the two people who nominated Bryn go ahead and speak about Bryn and all of her work.
Good evening. It really is a delight to be able to come and do this in November each year, but this year was especially exciting for us to bring and highlight Ms. Luter's work. And as you know, special ed is paperwork and specialized instruction and families and lots of meetings, and she just does an amazing job balancing all of that to kind of come into this perfect special ed teacher. And we're just really pleased to have her part of Orange County schools and at Eflin and doing great things for our kids.
Hi. So I could go on and on about Bryn all day. She knows how amazing I think she is, but one thing that really captures how we feel about her at Eflin is it takes a very special person to hear what a child cannot say, and she does that every single day.
Thank you so much. I'm just so taken back by this because it just means the world to be recognized for your passion and your hard work. Thank you, Connie Cremmons, for acknowledging me and being here tonight. Marielle Engolnick, you brought tears to my eyes when I read that letter. So thank you for appreciating me, for my leadership and my advocacy for my students. Also, Mr. Mark English, his ongoing support for me. He is my assistant principal. I appreciate you so much. Kelly Parks, she sees whom I am as an educator and the passion I have. She has made an environment, an inclusive environment, where my parents feel safe and comfortable to advocate for their children and know that they are supported. My students are thriving because of the cohesive environment she has created in our school building for our students with special needs. Of course, I want to thank my son Nolan. He's my heart. And I love you. But most importantly, I want to thank my students. They are my why. They are why I wake up and show up every day. They, and this is to my past and present students, I learn and grow each year because of them. They challenge me in a positive way, so I figure out those puzzle pieces to meet their individual needs. I am who I am because of my students. And remember, no matter what, as long as you try your hardest, that is all that matters. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Board. Apologies to you. Ms. Jeffries had planned to be here tonight to talk about Native American History Month, and she woke up this morning. We're seeing positive vibes her way. Woke up this morning, said she had a said she had a fever, a headache, and was not feeling well at all. So Ms. Jeffries, if you're watching, positive vibes to you. We hope that you feel better. But it caused me to also stop and think. It is not Ms. Jeffries' responsibility to teach us and to enlighten us about Native American History Month. It is our responsibility. It's something that we all must do. And so then November is Native American History Month, and so I put in our abstract, this is a meaningful way for us to recognize and celebrate such a rich and diverse culture that walked this land, and it was taken from them. And there's ways we can do that, right? We can educate ourselves. We can take time to learn about our indigenous brothers and sisters, our Native American history, truly find out what happened here in our local community. We can also attend events. Ms. Jeffries told me this week when we met, or last week we met, that on the 18th, there'll be a major event in Raleigh. And when I get that information, if you like it, I'll share it with you, and maybe we can all attend together to hear storytelling, to hear actual history, to hear our brothers and sisters speak from their native tongue, which I think will be encouraging. We can support indigenous arts and businesses. There's nothing that goes further along than to say, I support you, then to provide your dollars and funds in that manner. We could donate to native causes. Learn about tribal histories, but not in a performative manner. One thing I've been proud of in this district, and we've moved away from the TPs and the headgear during this time of celebration, and we look to really celebrate and honor our indigenous brothers and sisters. So as you learn more about the tribal history, make sure it's not performative, but actually in true nature of history. We can respect indigenous land. When I first came to the district in June, we used to do the land acknowledgement. That was a proud moment. I'd like for us to bring that back. We can respect the native land that we are standing upon, that we walk upon every day for the brothers and sisters whose blood has swept and drenched into this place. The land acknowledgement is just a start. There's much more that we can do, but let's at least start there. Advocate for change and support. Once again, be mindful of cultural appropriation. And let's celebrate the indigenous heritage. As we've been saying all year in the Office of Equity, it's not just the month. So as we begin to celebrate this month, we have resources on our website that you can utilize, teachers can use to help encourage and teach into the classrooms. Families can use that as well for conversations. But I would also say around this time, with friends and family, as we get together, we have true conversation about what this time of year really means and represents for our Native American brothers and sisters during this Heritage Month. So happy Native American Heritage History Month. Let's continue to learn and grow more. Thank you.
Good evening. This is the first time I had to do that. I was making sure that I had it upright. Thank you for allowing me to come before you tonight with these students and staff. Tonight, I'm here to honor some students that participated in the Paint It Orange Plain Air Paint Out. This has been a partnership that has been trying to get its footing for the last few years, and we have finally found a way for students to be a part of this competition that is sponsored by the Orange County Arts Commission and the Orange County Arts Alliance. This is their seventh annual year, the first year for the youth competition. So all three of our middle schools and both comprehensive high schools' arts teachers were invited to invite their students to participate, and we had 13 students from Orange County Schools to participate in this first year. And of those 13 students, there were four winners. The first-place winner, who was unfortunately not able to be with us tonight, she was the first-place winner for the high school competition, Melanie from Orange High School, and her artwork was entitled "All Things Are Different Before They Are Easy." First place, Orange High School. Let me just make sure that I point out that these students had to paint outside, in the elements, plain air. They could not take a picture and paint at home or in the studio. They were outside with their art, with their easel, with whatever medium they were using, and they were painting. We had our first-place winner from Orange Middle.
My name is Cela Getz, and the artwork that I got first place in was entitled "The Past and the Present."
First-place middle school winner.
I'm a youth teacher. Sorry. Amanda Guaya, the art teacher at Gravelly Hill Middle School. And I just want to say thank you to the parents for allowing them to participate, and I'm really excited for what's to come for the next years.
My name is Kalen Smith, and my artwork was entitled "River Walk."
Second-place winner.
I'm Chloe Decker, and my art was called "A Walk in the Park."
Very good. Thank you. Again, thank you for allowing us to come and show off the work of our students. We really appreciate this time to highlight them.
Thank you, and thank you, students. Wonderful recognitions. At this time, we need to have our agenda adoption, but we would like to pull one item on there, the Agenda Support Guidelines, Policy 1710, for further discussion. We will have that at the end of our consent agenda after that. And so if we could have a motion to adopt our agenda with that pulled. We will... Okay? Motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Now we will move into public comment. And Mr. Richmond, I'll let you read that.
We will now hear public comments. Speakers will be called in the order in which they signed up. Each speaker will have three minutes. Yielding time to other speakers is not permitted. If a speaker has written materials they would like to share, please hand them our board clerk Franklin McCune, and he will distribute them to the board. The purpose of the public comment is for the board to hear from members of the public, not to engage in back-and-forth discussions. Per our policy, board members will not respond to speakers during the public comment session. The board greatly values public feedback and welcomes all comments, regardless of viewpoint. However, please be reminded that children are often present at these meetings and that our public comment policy prohibits profanity, vulgarity, and personal abuse of any person. We ask that all comments be civil, respectful, and free of personal attacks. Any speaker who violates our public comment period or otherwise exceeds the bounds of order and decorum will be given a warning. Continued violations may result in the speaker being ruled out of order, at which point we will move on to the next speaker. Our first speaker for tonight is Nicholas Shriner.
Good evening. My name is Nicholas Shriner, current teacher and assistant A.D. at OHS and head wrestling coach at OMS. I want to address the inequity of our coaching pay scale and its longstanding freeze. As coaches of state-sanctioned sports, we play a pivotal role in shaping the lives of our students, and it is essential that our contributions are recognized and fairly compensated. I would first like to acknowledge that the school board and central office have numerous responsibilities and decisions to make, but the current coaching pay scale needs to be addressed. According to the former athletic director, Ernie Price, coaches' pay has remained stagnant since 2008, with no increases since that year. The oldest, easily accessible supplement chart publicly available from the June 10th, 2013 school board meeting confirms that our pay has not changed since at least the 2012-2013 school year. What's particularly frustrating is that there is no criteria for pay increase due to the freeze. Once a coach enters the pay scale, they are stuck at that pay, no matter how many years of experience they gain or their longevity in Orange County Schools. This issue is not just about money, but equity. We have dedicated ourselves to coaching state-sanctioned sports, all of which involve long seasons, pre-seasons, post-seasons, and summer camps, with additional responsibilities like obtaining CDLs to be able to drive our teams to events, which is no longer compensated. Over the past 15 years that our pay has remained frozen, there have been increasingly more requirements placed on us to coach, like additional classes and certifications required by the NCHSA and seasonal reports and other paperwork for Orange County Schools. Yet just two weeks ago, this board approved $10,000 allotting $1,700 per coach for six coaches of a club ultimate frisbee team, with Orange Middle being the only school that even has such a team at this time. This $1,700 per coach is more than all of the coaches of state-sanctioned sports are paid who have less than 13 years of coaching, with the exceptions of a few of the head coaching positions such as football. Surely you must see that this is unfair, unacceptable, and disheartening. It certainly fails to acknowledge our commitment and impact we have on our students' lives and have had for years. I speak as someone who grew up in this community, attended the high school here, and played sports under the guidance of great coaches who inspired me to become a teacher and a coach. When I began my career in 2015 as a teacher's assistant in Wake County, the coaching supplement I was paid was $2,500 as a first-year coach. This is higher than what most coaches in Orange County receive unless they have more than 15 years of experience due to an outdated and frozen pay scale. In conclusion, I urge the board and central office to remove the freeze on the coaching pay scale and update it to an equitable level in alignment with the current time. Let us ensure that coaches are valued and fairly compensated for their hard work and future success of our students and community. Thank you for your time and considerations.
Next speaker will be Spencer Petit.
Good afternoon. Good evening. I'm Spencer Petit. I started working in Orange County Schools in 1996. Today, I want to address crucial issues that affect not only me and my colleagues, but also various individuals in various professions. The need to update the pay scale and increase compensation to better align with the current times. I am a teacher's assistant, and I believe that years of experience we bring, and I believe that the years of experience we bring to our roles are not exactly reflected in our pay scales. While our work is invaluable, we do not earn the same as teachers. Furthermore, the issue extends beyond the classroom. As an assistant coach, I did not receive a pay increase based on my years of service, but rather I had to secure a head coaching position to see a significant change in my compensation. I have a deep connection to this community, having graduated from Orange High School as well. I am committed to providing the best support to our students. However, this commitment often translates into long hours and preseason, postseason as well. My experience and expertise grow with each passing year, but unfortunately, the compensation has not. The requirements and expectations placed on coaches in our district continue to increase, including the need for ongoing professional development and additional responsibilities. Yet our pay remains stagnant. This situation not only affects teacher assistants and coaches, but may affect others in the community who dedicate their lives and themselves to this job. It is imperative that we address this situation properly. A fair and updated pay scale that takes into account years of experience and the evolving demands of our roles is essential. Recognizing the contributions of dedicated professionals like us not only boosts morale, but also helps us to continue to provide the best possible support and education to our students. In conclusion, I urge our community and decision-makers to consider these factors and work towards a fair pay scale that reflects our dedication, expertise, and hard work of all the professionals in our district. It's time to bring our compensation in line with the current times and acknowledge the importance of experience and commitment in our roles. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker will be Justin Webb.
Good evening, board members. Board members, I've been an Orange County teacher and coach for the past 11 years. I'm very appreciative of all the board has done to raise teacher supplements over my time in the district. I know you are always considering options to support teachers and staff members with a limited amount of funds. Our tennis program is extremely grateful for your recent decision to fund the resurfacing of our tennis and track facilities. You took the time to listen to our coaches and athletic directors and find the funds to make this possible. I strongly encourage you that as you debate through a new budget for the school year, to please review coaches' supplements. I have been a coach for 11 years and have seen no raise since my first year coaching, and this is true for many coaches and those who take on extra duties like band and chorus. Parents wonder why it is sometimes hard to find coaches, and this is one reason among many. Coaches invest so much time and energy with our students outside of school hours and use a lot of their own money to support their programs. I have heard this has been in consideration for a few years, but no actual change has occurred. Many of our coaches are also driving our activity buses free of charge. Last year, the board supported a decision to finally pay coaches for their service with a small stipend for each five trips driven. However, the stipend was cut this year, further eliminating the small raise many coaches received last season. I would encourage board members to meet with A.D.s across the district and leaders with OCS to consider options that could raise supplement pay or, and/or, bring bus pay back to our coaches who drive on a regular basis. The sad reality of the current situation is that I would receive a higher supplement if I quit my position for a season and came back a season later. Many coaches have moved into the district and have been granted higher pay than our current coaches due to being a new employee. When I was first hired by Coach Ernie Price 11 years ago, I was told the longer I coached, the higher supplement I would receive. I hope at some point that truth will become a reality. Thank you for your time, and I wish you all the best as you continue to lead our district through this school year.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Sherri Calligan.
Chair Purcell, Vice Chair Richmond, Dr. Merrill, and members of the board, tonight you will view maps which show options for reassignment. As you consider these various scenarios, I implore you to think about what is best for the children of OCS, children who deserve to learn in diverse, inclusive schools that will prepare them to be active members of our society. I'm an Orange County taxpayer, OCS parent, veteran OCS teacher, as well as a member of the district's reassignment committee. I feel these maps fall short in balancing the inequities faced in our schools. In fact, instead of helping create a balance in our school system, these maps uphold the status quo in order to placate the vocal minority. When stakeholders were surveyed about reassignment priorities, the most important consideration was balancing student achievement. The data chosen for this task was a 22-23, third through fifth grade reading EOG proficiency. This data shows approximately a 20-point discrepancy between the schools considered for reassignment. I say "considered" because HES, the highest performing school in the district, is conveniently not a part of the reassignment decision. During tonight's presentation, you will see scenarios that do little to balance out student achievement across the elementary schools. A question I have is, why would EOG data be considered if it only targets third through fifth grade students? Looking at more robust data such as M-Class and Ames Web would allow us to analyze kindergarten through eighth-grade achievement data. I suspect the reason EOG data is used is because the discrepancy between the schools considered for reassignment would be much greater with a different data set. Some may not know that there are schools in our district where more students are in need of intensive supports than are ready to receive Tier 1 than are ready to receive Tier One classroom instruction. Or perhaps they just don't care as long as their children don't have to go to those schools. On the Board of Ed website, with tonight's agenda under the ORID draft redistricting data, there are quotes from the vocal minority who don't want their children to be reassigned. While stability is important to children, I implore you to read these quotes for what they are. People with privilege who don't want their children to go to that school because of unfounded beliefs about the quality of instruction and student populations. As a staff member who has taught in three OCS elementary schools over the past 20 years, I can attest to the fact that every teacher in this district loves their students and works tirelessly each and every day to be the best for their students. While one school may have higher scores than another, the instructional quality by and large is the same across the district. Please do not feed into the politics of placating the vocal minority at the expense of our children. Our students deserve better.
Next speaker is Sarah Patterson.
Good evening. Tonight, I speak to you as an Orange County resident, OCS parent, and OCS employee. My name is Sarah Patterson, and I am the school social worker at New Hope Elementary. My request of the board and the district to me is simple. Please have ORID present reassignment map options that reflect what OCS says are its top priority for redistricting, creating school districts that promote student achievement. When I attended the reassignment committee meeting on October 25th at Gravely Hill, I was disheartened that we were asked to provide feedback on a single set of maps for the district without being given the data that is essential for analyzing the pros and cons. Namely, student achievement data was woefully unclear. No achievement data was presented for current school districts. I had to go find that information the next day on my own. The previous speaker already alluded to the 27-point gap that was shown in the proficiency data from last year versus the 24% gap that is projected based on these maps. Some of my main takeaways from that meeting were, please do not waste our time by asking us to come to a meeting to give critical feedback without providing the data needed to meaningfully do so. The proposed map creates capacity at Eflin Cheeks. Otherwise, it looks like the priorities of these maps is stability. However, you ask stakeholders to rank their priorities for reassignment, and student achievement was the top priority of most respondents. Where is a map that prioritizes student achievement? How is it the River Parks District has barely changed at all? If balancing the student population across schools in accordance with board priorities and school assignment values is said to be a big why for redistricting, I ask that you, the board, reassert what those priorities and values are. By the looks of the first draft of maps, the priority appears to be maintaining the status quo while creating capacity at Eflin Cheeks. I would like to see another draft of maps that challenges the status quo and moves district lines to support student achievement. And then I would like to see the district support student learning by assigning staff to schools in a way that actually supports the specific student needs present in those buildings. I ask that the board and the district show us the stakeholders of this community, school maps that reflect meaningful, equitable change. A few words about Hillsborough Elementary. You, the board, ask that HES be excluded from this reassignment process. It was set up as a magnet school with limited bus transportation offered, and it became the magnet for affluent families with means to transport their children and the ability to apply. It became the white flight school. It is the great outlier in our district on several demographic domains, yet there is no consideration being given to changing it. I ask that you look at all these things and present maps that address them.
Next speaker is Gretchen Schmidt.
Good evening. I'm speaking on gender support guidelines, which is being reconsidered, and thirty, Policy 3540. Under parental notification, school principals must also consult with a school counselor or with the Director of Student Services before notifying parents of any change in the pronouns used to refer to a student in school records or by school personnel. If a parent objects to the use of the name or pronoun usage for their child, school principal should contact the Director of Student Services for further guidance. This is not required in the law. It is a stalling tactic and could be a pressure tactic to harass parents who don't agree to the change in name or pronoun. Furthermore, there is no directive in the statute to involve the Director of Student Services for guidance. The sports language has not been changed. GS 115C-12 does not delegate any authority to the State Board or NCHSAA or other state agencies. The footnote is also incorrect. The law requires it, not bureaucrats. In a letter to the board dated November 3rd from Chairs of the Education Committee, they said, "We would like to bring the following to your attention." A copy of your proposed policies designed to comply with the newly enacted Parents' Bill of Rights was sent, and understanding these policy changes will be considered November 6th, we would like to suggest some changes. The first suggested change concerns regarding Regulation Code 1710. Your proposed draft reads, "Students who request a change in the name or pronoun used to refer to them in school records or by school personnel should be informed of the parental notification requirement and given the option to drop or delay the request or to proceed in the understanding that their parents will be notified prior to any name change or pronoun use." Your language appears to conflict with the new section of the North Carolina statute, states that the school personnel will not discourage or prohibit personal parental notification or of involvement in critical decision regarding a student's mental, emotional, or physical health or well-being. When a child is struggling with gender identity issues and has made the decision to change his or her name or pronoun, clearly that child is making a critical decision affecting his or her mental and emotional well-being. Reminding the child about the parental notification requirement and suggesting a delay in that change to avoid parental notification amounts to discouraging parental notification, which conflicts with the requirement that school personnel not discourage or prohibit parental involvement. We also suggest a change to Policy 3540. Your language would allow representation of individuals and families of diverse gender identities or sexual orientations not intended to provide instruction on gender identity, sexual activity, or sexuality in K through 4th grade. Session Law 2023-106 defines curriculum to include the standard course of study and support materials, locally developed curriculum, supplemental instruction, textbooks, and other supplementary materials. Representations of individual and families of diverse identities or sexual orientation in curricular resources and classrooms are supplementary materials. Simply stating that they are not does not make them so. And that was Corbett, Blackwell, and Cotham.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Danielle Price.
Good evening. I come to you tonight as an Orange County school resident, an Orange County school parent, a member of our district's Equity Task Force, as well as our student reassignment committee. And I have grave concerns over the timeline that was presented at the committee meeting last week. I must say, overall, I'm extremely disappointed with the process and believe that it is time to put a pause or halt to our process. The work is months late and has yet to produce competent baseline maps. Staff running the project appears to be overwhelmed, given that the lion's share of the work is being completed during the busiest time of year for parents and teachers. Why would we pick the two months where we only have one board meeting a month to present proposed maps? Given the delays on the front end of the process and the current rush to the finish line, I believe that we should pause the process until we have a permanent superintendent. In light of the delays and lack of information, public trust has been eroded, and it will be difficult to recover without substantial changes for staffing and the process. Some problems I've noticed are, even though it's stated that the highest priority among parents and the board is student achievement, there's no evidence that the map changes will improve that or balance our socioeconomic status. I was especially shocked and appalled when we were told that the consultant only used one data point, EOG scores from 22-23, and home values were even used as a proxy for student achievement. There's no evidence that any of the maps are feasible since transportation impacts haven't even been considered yet. On the surface, it appears that the new maps will make bus routes longer and place an even greater strain on our already stressed transportation system. There's been no response to questions that were raised by the committee or even the community. Questions that included, how will staff and programs be balanced across our schools? How will parents transfer, or why would parents transfer from a school that offers AIG five times a week to a school that offers it three times? Or why would a parent want to go from a B-school to a D-school? What about our EC and ELL services? How will you address the staff and service disparities across our schools? We were informed during the committee meeting that the board voted against program changes. So this leaves me with the sinking feeling that there is no plan to address our service disparities that not only already exist, but the ones that are sure to come as a result of a haphazard process. There are no working models, which delays everything further. In the past, the district to redistrict ORID models were tied to Power School and Tims, and that allowed the board to work with staff and parent input to make changes and see immediate impacts. There's no evidence that these models exist today. At this point, I have little to no confidence that our process will even benefit our schools or students. And a question that if, that this can be accomplished in a reasonable timeframe, given our staff reluctance or lack of knowledge to answer questions and the absence of our working models, it's unclear at the moment whether this can even be completed at all. Our families deserve not only a thoughtful and meaningful process, but a transparent one. And I implore you to put this process on hold until a permanent superintendent is hired and we can get our bearings. In the meantime, please insist that ORID work with our district staff to develop working models so the process can move quickly when we're ready.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Bobby Schreiner.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the board for all their hard work. Dr. Merrill, thank you for all your hard work. Chair Purcell, Vice Chair Richmond, glad to be here. My name's Bobby Schreiner, and I was a coach and teacher for 29 years here in Orange County schools. I coached football for 10 years, varsity football. I coached JV baseball for two years, and I coached wrestling for 29 years, 28 as the head coach. I am here tonight on behalf of the of the coaches in Orange County. You know, they deserve the best in terms of pay. I had the opportunity to go into the state championship for the girls volleyball from Orange High School on Saturday at Reynolds Coliseum, and it was amazing atmosphere. And, you know, a coach will influence more people in one year than people will do in a lifetime. And here in Orange County, we want to have the best coaches. And to do that, you got to pay these coaches. When I served as the head coach of Orange High School for 28 years, we had a lot of assistant coaches that were probably making zero amount an hour for the time of, you know, you think about it. There's the postseason. You're working with these athletes. You have the season, which is so long. A lot of Saturdays where we'd be gone for like 12 to 14 hours, driving the bus with no pay. Just the coaches had to drive the buses. Then you have the preseason. You have the state tournaments. So there's a lot of time and effort and, you know, there's a lot of sweat and tears that these coaches give their athletes. And our pay in this county, you know, it's been frozen since 2008. And I retired in 2017. And it's, it's really, it's really sad that, you know, these coaches are not being compensated for their hard work, and they work so hard and put in so much time, you know, along with, you know, along with their teaching during the day. And so it's exhausting job. And it's hard when they're, the supplements are so low for the assistant coaches and even for the head coaches as Justin Webb talked about and Coach Spencer Potite and Coach Schreiner. So on this here, as an old coach that loves this county and loves athletics, and, and like I said, we have an unbelievable opportunity as coaches to influence our, our athletes for life, to teach them life values that carry on. It's not about the wins and the losses, but it's about teaching these guys and gals life principles. And that's what athletics were created for. And I know this county has a great tradition of athletics. And so thank you so much for your time.
Next speaker is Allison Mahaly.
Good evening, board. Thank you for this opportunity to talk to you. I'm here tonight as an Orange County taxpayer, and I want to talk about this Parents' Bill of Rights or parental rights. I want to remind you that as elected officials, you answer to the wider community, not just parents whose kids are currently enrolled in our schools. Public schools are a community asset. They're funded for the greater good. And they're meant to teach students that, one, history matters, and accurate history matters the most. We cannot deny the fact that some of our history is complicated, even cringe-worthy, and that we are still struggling to fix the problems we created. We need to teach students that science is real. Facts matter, and close examination of the facts from all sides can lead to a clearer truth. And most of all, public schools are here to give young people the opportunity to learn from one another, to resist the urge to other people who are not like them by giving them a chance to come to school as themselves, their full selves, no matter how they identify with regard to gender, no matter what race, ethnicity, or religion. All the students are welcome in our public schools. And finally, schools really need to be a place that is safe. Yes, safe. Students need to know that it's okay for them to be who they are at school, and that sometimes that safety means to be safe from their bigoted, mean-spirited, hateful parents who don't want them to be taught that our history is complicated and sometimes cringe-worthy. They don't want them to be taught that science is real, and in fact, humans never walked among the dinosaurs. And they especially don't want them to be taught that people, yes, all people, even those who look different, dress different, or love differently, are worthy of respect, dignity, and even celebration just as much as anyone else. So as you hear from parents about their rights and their bill of rights, I want you to remember that for each parent of a child enrolled in Orange County schools, there are more than three times the taxpayers with no children in the schools. And we have elected you to base your decisions on the greater good collectively, not on individual rights. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jackie Barker.
Hello. I'm here tonight to speak on the graduation venue that's up for vote tonight. I have a senior at Orange High School. He couldn't be here tonight, so I'm just speaking on his behalf. He prefers that the graduation be held at the Dean Smith Center. Reasoning behind that is keeping in longstanding tradition. You know, our seniors have spent the first two years of their high school with a lot of traditions and high school experiences taken away from them. And I really feel like the board owes it to our seniors to have a voice in, in how they graduate. Secondly, financially, the Dean Dome was the second cheapest option. I did notice that there wasn't, on the proposal, an actual budget for what the overall cost of the entire graduation is. So that might be something to consider before voting, to see how much money you actually have to spend. And then also partnering with the Chapel Hill School District and sharing the cost, you know, helps, benefits both school districts. I think it's really important to listen to our seniors because it is their day. It's about them. They should have a voice. You know, I think, you know, you've got the three options out there. You're gonna not make everyone happy. So just maybe the, consider the majority of what seniors are saying to you as maybe a top priority in your decision tonight. you as maybe a top priority in your decision tonight. Thank you. And while I'm up here, I did want to say the other thing on the agenda tonight, the vote on the policy 3540, the comprehensive sex and health education. The way it's currently written, there's still ways for sexual content to get into the classroom, so maybe like just tightening up on some of the language in that. Thank you. Thank you.
Next speaker is Sarah Snipes.
As you recall, I spoke before you last meeting on policy revisions and was concerned because there were, there seemed to be some underlying gaps and appearances to circumvent the law. The entire purpose of State Bill 49 is to support and protect parental rights. I've heard from several parents in the community who have read and screened these policies that there are still some concerning language and gaps that need attention and rewriting. An instance, and I'll pause, I'm glad to hear that you've tabled it for tonight, these are things you might want to discuss. Policy 1710, if one of the students doesn't agree with using pronouns to address another student, that that can be considered discrimination, harassment, or bullying under the policy. The policy reads as this, while inadvertent slips and honest mistakes may occur from time to time, the intentional and persistent refusal to respect and use a student's or staff's member's gender identity or chosen name and pronoun is prohibited and may constitute discrimination, harassment, or bullying under policy 1710. School officials should contact the Director of Student Services or the Chief Officer of Human Resources as appropriate before pursuing any form of student or employee discipline based on refusal to use a student's or staff member's chosen name or pronoun. We have heard from a lawyer constituent that this language is actually in direct violation of the law. And I'll quote from this legal counsel. Under the names and pronouns, the policy compels the school officials to use a preferred pronoun. If they refuse, the policy says it may constitute discrimination, harassment, or bullying. For teachers or students to use certain speech, it can be construed as compelled speech, which violates the First Amendment. Additionally, a second item I'd like to bring to your attention as regard to the gender policy is that the policy makes the assumption that it's a blanket policy for all grades. There needs to be specific restriction that it only applies to grades five through 12. Per the law, the K through four grade should be exempt from the policy. Additionally, if I have any time left, I want to reiterate what we've heard tonight from the coaches about coaches' pay. Coaches have a profound impact on students. We have some of the most impeccable coaches in the state. Let's make sure we keep them and demonstrate to them how much they are appreciated. Coach Schreiner said, as a coach, you have the power to influence students. As board members, you have the power to influence our teachers. Let's make sure that you provide them a positive opportunity and positive influence for our amazing coaches. I'll leave you with this. John 16, verse 33. Jesus said, I have told you these things so that in me you may have peace. In this world, you will have tribulation, but take heart, I have overcome the world. Thank you.
Our last speaker is Matthew Newell.
My name's Matthew Newell, and I'm a parent of four kids who are in Orange County schools. I actually didn't want to get up and speak tonight, but I felt compelled after listening to so many speakers two weeks ago as well as today, talking about the intent of Senate Bill 49, with the intent assumed to be, in fact, giving parental rights. I feel compelled to offer an alternative view on that, which is to say, I don't actually think that the Parents' Bill of Rights has anything to do with parents' rights. And I think it has everything to do with the broader agenda that we've seen from the General Assembly. If we look at this one bill in isolation, I think would be a mistake because we really need to see it in the context of the other bills that have also passed at the same time. I'm especially thinking of HB 808, which is now the law that prohibits parents from being able to consent for their children to have gender-affirming care. And it would seem that that was in direct violation of the supposed Bill of Rights that's provided to us in SB 49, which states that parents have the right to upbringing and teach moral and religious values of their choice, as well as the right to make medical decisions for their children. And yet HB 808 does the exact opposite and tells them, actually, you don't have the right to do that particular medical choice, you don't have that right to have that particular view. And in such, what we can see then is that it doesn't have anything to do with parents' rights and is just a part of the broader practice that we've seen all year from our legislature as well as legislatures across the country, that apparently this is the election cycle where trans kids are going to be the punching bag. We're going to use them as the boogeyman to scare everyone to the polls and continue to vote for the legislators who are in power. And I really think that it is not in the best interest of kids nor their families to have it dictated to them who they are or what they should be called. When someone tells you who they are, you should believe them, and I think that not giving kids that ability, that right, would be a mistake. And so I just want to say thank you for all of the work that you've done so far on the gender-affirming policy, as well as the comprehensive sex ed and the other policies that have been, you know, changes have been mandated by SB 49. I appreciate you taking the time and effort to really get this right and to be able to respect the law, but not at the expense of the welfare of kids. So I would just end by saying it is my fervent wish and prayer, to paraphrase from the pillar on the roof, that the Lord bless and keep the General Assembly far away from us. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Okay. Thank you to everyone. We now have board comments. If we have any board members who would like to make comments, we will start with Dr. Moore. Do you have anything that you'd like to add tonight?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Ms. Molly?
No comments tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Dolle?
I just wanted to give a shout out to Orange High School Theater and their production of Badger, which I had the opportunity to see about a week ago. And I know they've won a number of awards at the high school, the state high school play festival. It was really a fantastic performance, so congratulations to all of them.
Ms. Hauser?
Yes, thank you. I had a couple of things. First, if you all are following WCHL, you know that the need for controls over the manufacture and distribution of synthetic cannabis is hitting the news. And if you were here last spring, Diane Shambless of the Orange Partnership for Alcohol and Drug-Free Youth told our board and the public about the legal loophole that is placing our communities and schools at risk. In the long session, this past long session, the General Assembly passed HB 563, which is an important step to controlling synthetic cannabis. I would like to ask our board to consider writing to Senator Meyer and ask him to support or even sponsor this legislation in the Senate during the short session. I think this is something that we can all be proud to support. Second, I have been asked to, first, I want to thank our transportation staff for the work they're doing every day to get thousands of kids to and from school. You are essential, especially to our working families and our, imagine, our families trust our drivers with their children. But on behalf of these grateful families, I've been asked to ask if it's possible to improve communication about bus delays. Working parents need advance notice if their bus is running late or out of service. They rely on the Where's My Bus app, but could easily switch to something else if that was better. One suggestion is to run the app early to make sure it's working, and if it's not, please notify the parents before the bus is expected to arrive. They need to know in advance so that they can make alternative arrangements for their children. So I was hoping we could look at ways to maybe improve this. So that's it. And I want to thank everybody for their comments tonight.
Okay. Mr. Richman?
Two things. I just want to say that I really enjoyed attending the North Carolina School Board Association Fall Law Conference a few weeks ago in Asheville. That was very informative. And then finally, just with Veterans Day approaching, I want to say thank you to all the vets and all of our active military personnel. And a special shout out to my dad, who's a member of the Blinded Veterans Association in Alamance County. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Atherton?
Uh, no comments tonight. Thank you.
All right. And I will add again, thank you to all who are here tonight, and my friends at Orange High School, thank you for all of your comments, and all of our parents, we appreciate it. And I would like to wish everyone a good Veterans Day too as well, and I know kids are off tomorrow, and then they're off for Veterans Day, so I hope everyone enjoys that time. All right. At this time, Dr. Merrill, do you have any comments?
I do. Thank you. Just one subject. The customer success team of Eboard, which is our Symbli platform for board materials and communications, identified Orange County schools as an emerging candidate for their Spotlight Series. Particularly, or specifically, they cite our very own Franklin McCune, who is the Administrative Assistant to the Superintendent and the Board Specialist, with very high praise for his leadership and effective and efficient use of Symbli in the everyday governance, representing our school system and the management of those issues. There should be a prospectus or a profile up, which they're working on. Franklin has a wizard in the use of his board communication platform, and I know as practitioners of it, and he's the go-to guy, who was over here, by the way, in the dapper tie. And additionally, the profile includes the Orange County schools, but this was published in their 2023 publication of year in review. And I want to send my congratulations and thanks very much to Franklin and on behalf of the board and so many others. Well done, sir. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. All right. At this time, we need to approve our consent items, and if, remember that we have pulled one to be discussed after we get through approving the consent items. So I need a motion to approve our items for consent.
Moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Dr. Moore. Item has passed. All right. We have moved gender support guidelines down right under this right now, and some changes have been made. I think, Ms. Hauser, wanted to speak to that.
Yeah, I'll just make a couple of comments. First, I wanted to thank our attorney for thoughtfully adapting our gender support guidelines to comply with the requirements of Senate, of state SB 49. And as I read the changes, they read as compliant with the law, but staying true to the goals of our guidelines or our policy. There was one change that made me a little uncomfortable, and I was wondering if the board would consider removing it, and that's under the phrase Parental Notification, Section 2. It says, Students who request a change in the name or pronouns used to refer to them in school records or by school personnel will, instead of should, be informed of the parent notification requirement, period. And I think we can drop the rest. It says, given, so we don't say they're given the, they'd be given the option to drop or delay the request or proceed. So I'd like to propose that we just drop, drop that second part and change that word, should to will.
Okay. Clarifying question for Neil, I think. So if that portion were dropped, would students still be able to say, oh, I don't want to, I don't want to do this change then?
I think the policy would be silent on that point, but certainly they could express their views. I mean, they wouldn't prohibit that discussion from occurring, if that's your question.
Any further questions from anyone? Dr. Moore, Mr. Atherton? Anyone here?
No, ma'am.
Go ahead, Mr. Atherton.
No, no other comments.
Okay. Thank you. Any other concerns here? Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I do, I do have some concern about taking that portion out because I do think there's a difference in, you know, the bill requires notice to parents when there are changes in names and pronouns used in school records or by school personnel. That's in the statement right now. I think it's important, once students know about the parental notification piece, for them to decide not to proceed with that if they have worries. So, you know, I think the, I have some discomfort with taking that, with taking that phrase out for that reason. If it's not perfectly clear, you know, that, that that's still something that they can do, I think.
Mr. Reiman, do you have any comments on that?
Was there a question for me? I thought.
No, I was just, yeah, wondering if you had anything you'd like to add.
I think that the, I mean, again, as I noted earlier, and I'm happy to talk in closed session, you know, with any more difficult questions, but removing that language from the policy doesn't preclude these conversations from occurring, it just, it removes that statement from the policy and makes any, you know, the nitty-gritty becomes an operational issues, I guess, to some extent.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion to make this change?
My move that we make the change?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. All right. Motion passes as is, and we have had the first read of that policy tonight with these Okay. At this time, we would like to.
Chair, I'm sorry. Before we move on, Dr. Merrill just asked if Dr. Moore's vote was recorded. I did not hear her vote for the minutes.
Okay. I thought I heard, but Dr. Moore, did you vote?
I was gonna say, no, I did not vote.
Okay. I'm sorry. I thought I had heard you.
No, ma'am. My vote is no.
Okay. Thank you. It is recorded now. Thank you so much. Anything else? You got it. Okay. At this time, I would like to welcome Caitlin Autry from the School Boards Association, who is going to give an update on our community staff and student survey for our superintendent search. So, welcome tonight. We are glad to have you here, and turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, members of the board and members of the public. As you heard, my name is Caitlin Autry, and I'm an attorney with the North Carolina School Boards Association. I work in our policy and legal department alongside my colleague, Mr. Sam Thorpe, who could not be here tonight because of another scheduling obligation, but asked me to come in his stead. It's an honor to be here, and I'd like to extend my thanks on behalf of NCSBA for allowing us to work with you guys in this very important endeavor. So as the agenda states, I am presenting an update on the superintendent's search regarding the community staff and student survey results. First slide, please. This survey was open to the public from October 4th through October 23rd. The full survey results, within a confidential student and/or personnel information rejected, has been provided to board members previously electronically. And this presentation in front of you is a summary of those results, which I believe has already been posted to Symbli as well. In total, the board received 718 responses to the community survey and 114, excuse me, 154 responses to the staff survey. and 114, excuse me, 154 responses to the staff survey. Of the responses to the community survey, 26 of those responses were to the Spanish-language community survey, and one response was to the student survey. I would like to congratulate you guys on broadcasting this survey and ensuring that the public provided comment. It's really a testimony to your services and your dedication to this. Of the respondents to the survey, 298 community members submitted written comments, including nine comments to the Spanish-language community survey, while 66 staff members provided comments. As I stated, these are really good numbers for a community and school system of your size. Next slide, please. As you can see here on this slide, of the community respondents, a little over 400 individuals have children currently enrolled in a school system, or a school within the school system, and almost 200 respondents do not have students currently enrolled. Next slide, please. Majority of the respondents with children attending a school within the school system either has a child in elementary or high school. You can see on this slide here that respondents with children in elementary school are just in between 200 and 250, whereas the respondents with children in high school is just over 200. That number falls as you reach middle school with under 150. And for respondents with children in pre-K, that number is roughly about 10. Next slide, please. The survey also included an opportunity for respondents to include family income information, with responses ranging from zero to $100,000 or above. You can see here on this slide that roughly 75 respondents had a family income between $0 and $50,000. Over 150 respondents have a family income between $50,000 and $100,000. And over 250 respondents have a family income of over $100,000. Next slide, please. In addition to asking about family income, the survey also asked about the demographics of respondents. You can see here on this slide that the majority of community survey respondents, roughly 400, are white or Caucasian. Over 50 respondents are black or African-American, and roughly the same amount are Hispanic or Latino. A small number of respondents are also either Asian or Asian-American, American Indian or Alaska Native, Native Hawaiian or other Pacific Islander. In addition, a few respondents identified as simply just another race rather than one of the options listed. Next slide, please. Of the respondents to the staff survey, an overwhelming majority of respondents are currently enrolled as a teacher. As you will see here on this slide, it is somewhere between 80 respondents and 90 respondents. Another 40 or so respondents are either school-level support staff or district-level support staff. A small number of administrators at the school level and at the district level also responded to the survey. And in addition, a little over 10 respondents to the staff survey are employed in other roles. Next slide, please. Of the staff respondents, almost 60 are assigned to a high school. Over 40 are assigned to an elementary school. Just under 20 are assigned to a middle school. And three are assigned to a pre-K. In addition, respondents who are not assigned to a specific school indicated whether they were assigned either to the central office or simply another location. Next slide, please. The demographics were also polled for the staff survey, and these demographics pretty much mirror the demographics of the respondents for the community survey. Of the staff respondents, almost 100 are white or Caucasian. More than 10 are black or African-American. More than 10 are Hispanic or Latino. A small number of respondents are Asian or Asian-American, Native Hawaiian or other Pacific Islander, or identified as another ethnicity or race. None of the respondents indicated they were American Indian or Alaska Native. Next slide, please. Respondents were also asked to rate certain characteristics on certain characteristics of a superintendent candidate according to their importance based on a 1 through 5 scale, with 1 being not at all important and 5 being extremely important. Next slide, please. Of community respondents, you will see here on this slide that the most important characteristic of a superintendent candidate is his or her willingness to listen to input, followed by the candidate's ability to communicate well with people of all races and socioeconomic statuses. And then moving through, we also have someone who models high standards of integrity, someone who understands how to provide safe environments for students and staff, and someone who understands how to effectively advocate for needed resources. This is compared to staff respondents who prioritized a candidate who models high standards of integrity, a candidate who communicates well with people of all races and socioeconomic statuses. And then, once again, moving through, decreasing priority, someone who is willing to listen to input, a candidate who understands how to provide safe environments for students and staff, and candidates who understand how to effectively advocate for needed resources. Next slide. This goes on. It's a 1 through 10 list. I will not read each of these to you, but I will highlight the least important for both the community respondents and the staff respondents. For community, the least important was that a candidate is accessible and responds to certain concerns in a timely fashion. Whereas for staff, the least important characteristic was someone who has ideas and approaches to close achievement gaps. Next slide, please. Finally, in addition to characteristics of a potential superintendent, respondents were asked to rank according to importance the experience of a candidate. The same scale was used, with 1 being not at all important and 5 being extremely important. Next slide. For community respondents, the top priority was a candidate who has experience with building, maintaining, and managing schools, as well as someone who has experience in curriculum development and instruction. For staff respondents, the top priority was a candidate who has been an effective classroom teacher, as well as someone who's been a successful principal. You also see listed the 3, 4, and 5 for valued experiences for both community and staff respondents. Next slide. Next slide, please. I apologize. That is it. I was thinking there was another one. So I'd like to note that in addition to the community and staff results we received, we also received an organizational statement from the NCAA CP Northern Orange Branch, located here in Hillsborough, and that has been provided to the board as well. So the characteristics and experiences I previously mentioned are used to create a leadership profile. Board members, I will ask that you take the time to consider the characteristics, the experiences, the qualities that you think are most important as superintendent, and individually email my colleague, Sam Thorpe, with those items by 5:00 PM tomorrow. We will then use your input along with the community input and the staff input to create a custom leadership profile that will evaluate the applicants throughout the search process. This profile, along with all of the application materials, will be posted to Symbli on Friday, November 10th. At the latest, it may be before then. And additional information about the application materials will be provided at that time as well. However, if after tomorrow at 5:00 PM, if you've had time to ruminate on the community responses and the staff responses, and there are other things that come to mind, this is a flexible profile, and you're welcome to email us at any time, and of course, we can adapt to that. Additionally, the deadline for applicants to submit their applications is in just a few short hours at midnight. When I checked today around 2:00 PM, we had received 20 applications. And I would say this amount of applications is fairly average for a school system of your size. But I will note, we typically receive many more applications in the last few hours before the deadline ends. So I do expect we'll receive a handful more. Tomorrow, board members can expect to receive an email from Mr. Thorpe with an update on the application process along with final numbers and a draft press release regarding the superintendent's search. It is my understanding that the board is considering either next Monday or next Tuesday to meet on those applications. This is all the information I have for you at the time, but I am happy to answer any questions now that you may have, or if any pop-up later, to respond via email to myself or Mr. Thorpe.
Okay. Does anyone have questions? Ms. Molly?
It's not a question. It's just a couple of comments. Thank you very much for this. And I just want to say that the fuller set of comments that people submitted with the surveys, I found really enlightening and useful. Some folks raised things that like, aren't necessarily going to play into the superintendent's search, but it was an opportunity to tell the board something. And so I just appreciated all of the different responses there. And, yeah, I mean, I just, I'm sure that all of the board members, I won't speak for other board members, that, you know, the survey respondents were not representative of the demographics of our families and students. That was also true last time we did this. It is a little bit more representative than last time. I think last time we did this, our respondents were like 85% white and high-income. And this time, it might be like low 70s or something. So I just want to, that's hard. Like, I just really wish that we could figure a way to, figure out a way to crack that and really get the perspectives of all of our families. But nonetheless, found it really useful information.
Of course. Once again, thank you for the opportunity for NCSBA to work with you. And if you do have further questions, please do not hesitate to contact us. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for being here tonight, and we appreciate your information. Thank you very much. All right, next we have our finance audit report. Good evening. Good evening. General statute requires that we have our books audited by external certified public accountants annually. And this evening, we have Dale Spith, who is a certified public accountant and partner with Anderson, Smith &amp; White, to provide to you and the community our report for the fiscal year that was just audited that ended June 30th of 23. So Dale, I'm gonna pull up the slides and turn it over to you.
Okay, great. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Good evening, Madam Chair and board members. Hope you are all doing well. Appreciate y'all allowing our firm to perform the board's audit for the year ended June 30th, 2023. I think each of you should have already received an electronic PDF of the financial statements. The report's a little lengthy, so we'll be going over just a few pages from the report that I think are of the most importance to you all in overseeing the finances of the district. The financials cover two main areas that we're required to audit and issue reports on. The financial section covers the first 62 pages of the report, and it's followed by the compliance section that starts on page 63 of the report. In the financial section, pages 1 through 3 of the report is our financial statement opinion letter. And that is a clean, unmodified opinion, which is exactly what the board wants to receive. And this simply means that we feel the numbers that are presented in the report are reliable and free from any sort of material misstatement or errors. Now, the first page that I'd like to turn your attention to is page 13. And page 13 is the balance sheet of the governmental funds of the district. And we'll be focusing on the first column on that page. First column is your general fund. Okay. All right, and if you look at the top in that column, total assets as of June 30th were $5,271,359. And that was comprised primarily of cash and cash equivalents, which were $5,132,873. And you had total liabilities there in the middle of $1,851,602. And if you take your assets minus liabilities, you get the district's fund balance as of June 30th, which is the next-to-last number in that first column, of $3,419,757. And that amount represents a decrease of approximately $1.5 million from the fund balance that was reported at the beginning of 2022. And in the 2022 year, the district reported a decrease in fund balance of about $1.7 million. So over the past two years, the district has reported a decline in fund balance of about $3.2 million, which represents about, just about half of the district's fund balance. Now, for the current 23-24 fiscal year, the district is budgeted to use $347,000 of fund balance. So it's good to see that the budgeted use of fund balance has been significantly reduced for the current year end. And hopefully, the board can stick to using this amount of fund balance or even less in the current year. I know Ms. Raff keeps you all well-informed on the district's fund balance levels, but we would like to always emphasize to boards the importance of closely monitoring your fund balance situation and trying to maintain fund balance at a sufficient level for cash flow purposes. And also, you want to maintain adequate fund balance reserves for emergency needs that may arise. And did anyone have any specific questions about the district's fund balance or any other numbers on this page before we move on? Okay, if not, let's turn over to page 61, and we'll look at the school group program. And page 61 shows the revenues and the expenditures of this program for the year ended June 30th, 2023. And if you go about 3/4 of the way down on that page, there's a line that says net change in fund balance. In the middle column, you've got the actual results for the year. And you can see that the program reported a loss for the year of $139,986. Now, in the previous year, it reported a profit of about $931,000. Now, in the '21 and '22 fiscal years, due to the pandemic, the federal government allowed all students to eat free, which resulted in a significant increase in meal served and related USDA revenues. But during the 2023 year, the federal government discontinued this program of allowing all students to eat free. And the district had to revert back to requiring students to complete free and reduced lunch applications. And this resulted in the district reporting a significantly lower amount of USDA revenues. That lower USDA revenue was slightly offset by an increase in food sales, but it wasn't nearly, the increase in food sales wasn't nearly enough to compensate for the decline in federal reimbursements. And then on top of that, the program encountered higher food and labor costs, which resulted in increased program expenses. So the combination of lower revenues with the increased costs are what accounted for the current year loss compared to the prior year profit that the program reported. Now, we audit a lot of districts, and we've seen the same scenario play out at pretty much every district that we've been to this year. But even with the reported loss this year, the program still has very good cash balance reserves of over $1.9 million at year-end and continues to be in good financial condition. I think management would just want to monitor expenses as much as possible and just try to make cuts where it can. Anyone have any questions on the school nutrition program? Okay. All right, starting on page 63 of the report is the first of three letters that we issued relating to the compliance testing over the board's internal controls and expenditure of state and federal grant awards. And we're required each year to perform compliance audits of the state and federal grants that flow through the district. We're happy to report that all three of these letters are a clean, unmodified report. We're happy to report that all three of these letters are clean, unmodified reports, which means there were no internal control weaknesses, no findings, and no question costs reflected in any of these letters. And we're happy to report that it appears the district has very good controls and processes in place over all the major financial transaction cycles and grant compliance areas that we were required to test for our audit. And we also issued a separate three-page letter, we call it a required communications letter. And I won't go into detail on that letter, but just point out that it had boilerplate language. It discusses that there were no difficulties or disagreements encountered in dealing with management during the audit. There were no uncorrected misstatements noted during the audit, and there were no reportable issues noted during the audit. So overall, the audit went very smoothly. We were very happy with what we saw. From a financial standpoint, the district's finances are very transparent. Anything that we requested backup documentation for, we've selected a lot of payroll transactions, general disbursement transactions. Management was able to provide proper backup for all of that, all of the testing that we performed. And I thank Ms. Rath and her staff, they do an outstanding job of maintaining accurate books and records, and, and even more importantly, they do a great job of maximizing the state and federal funds that flow through the district. And we appreciate all their hard work, and if anyone has any questions, if there's anything I didn't go over that you have a question on, I'd be happy to answer those now.
Anyone have questions, thoughts? Dr. Moore, any questions? Mr. Atherton, any questions?
No, just a comment. Thank you, Ms. Rath, to you and your staff for such diligence in our finances and keeping us up to date on what's going on. Thank you so much.
I don't have any questions, Ms. Purcell.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Moore. I would also like to thank Ms. Rath and her, her staff at the central office, because they do a fantastic job, and we appreciate everything that you do. All right, thank you so much for being here with us tonight.
We appreciate y'all, letting us work with y'all, and if anyone has any questions later on, feel free to call me, Ms. Rath has my number. Be glad to talk to you about anything in the report.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
All right. Next, we're going to talk about the Wilford Report with Mr. Foster.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Chair Purcell, Vice Chair, members of the board. Dr. Merrill, presenting tonight from Wilford are Jessica Gadel and David Sturts. They'll be providing an update on the long-range optimization plan and recommendations for Orange County Schools' facilities. They'll be joining us virtually, and we'll be driving their own slide deck.
Okay. Welcome.
Well, good evening. Thank you for having us here, Chairman, members of the board, and welcome to a presentation. Let me just give me a moment here, let me get my screen set up. Jessica may be joining us a tick late here, so... Excuse me while I get that ready. All right. If you let me know when you can see my screen, I think we're up and ready to go now. Okay, very good. So glad to be here with you again. We're going to take you through the presentation. Some of this is a repeat of what you have seen in the past, as to describe some of the background data that we've been working with throughout the presentation, and then get to the end. Here we have a current set of draft recommendations that we'd like to share with you as we near the, the end of this process. That, those recommendations will be submitted both for you and for Chapel Hill to, to the county, and we're now at the point where we believe we are in the refinement stage of those final recommendations, where the discussion will be on some matters of timing and what makes sense in terms of funding, potential funding options to achieve the recommendations over different periods of time. So the data sets to include in tonight's presentation include a review of the live attend, live attend analyses that you've seen from the condition assessments. We'll review the options that were considered along the way, what our current recommendations are, and the timeline involved. Live attend analysis, if you remember, we looked at your historic enrollment, geocoding the students, and looked at where, where they were relative to where they attend. And so the, this also showed student densities, and so you can see by location, the map on the right shows over time, this is our elementary schools, now we're into high schools, going through time here, where the density is growing. And you can see, for you all, what we look at is here's two things. One is the density and growth of the population as a whole, and the secondly is, are there any significant changes in patterns of students opting in, staying, opting to stay into their school boundary versus opting out? What, we did not see significant swings in opt-in, opt-out rates or live attend, but we did see is for you, a, the growing density of a population there on your western flank, and that's impacting directly Eflin Cheeks Elementary and the surrounding areas, and that is something that we recommend addressing in the plan. The facility condition assessment told, identified a total of just a little over two-hundred million in total need over five years. That looks at five different levels of priority, from level priority one, which has to do with your fire suppression systems and your life safety, life safety, safety systems, through priorities three and four, which start to get into interior work, and five is more of sort of your aesthetic nature, paints and the like. The total ten-year need takes the, that a total current need identified, and then adds to it lifecycle items, systems that are anticipated to expire, because maybe it's a thirty-year roof, and it's currently on its twenty-sixth year, it's budgeted for renovation or replacement four years from now. That brings the total need in ten-year up to three hundred and eighty-nine million for a total, with the total replacement value rather, of your current buildings estimated somewhere around seven hundred and forty million dollars. So the FCI is the cost to repair versus the cost to replace, and so over the five-year period, that gives you two hundred million divided by seven forty-three, or about twenty-seven percent FCI, and your ten-year FCI is fifty. And that just is a, a good indicator that over these next five years, that the total, ten years rather, the total needs are getting you to the point in your facility portfolio where several of your buildings, many of your buildings will, it will make as much financial sense, in fact, more financial sense in many cases, to do major renovations or building replacements as opposed to a continued building, building maintenance program. That is something that the ultimate decision there about major renovation or replacement also pertains to educational adequacy in utilization. And as you go to the bottom of this chart, you see that even using the, the current SAPFO capacities, the district-wide utilization is eighty-five percent, which is really in the middle of the sweet spot where you want to be. However, the difficulty is, the range is from under seventy percent to well over a hundred and twenty percent. And that, that shows, that is, of course, the population is distributed unevenly, so some areas of your town are facing that pressure more than others. In addition to that, as in terms of adequacy, a big figure that is central to our work and consideration is that approximately fifty percent of all of your elementary school classrooms are undersized, are significantly under what we typically recommend, of about thirty-seven and a half square feet per student, or about nine hundred square foot classrooms on average. Many, many classrooms are small, and that, when you are that small, in that many classrooms are small, it really dictates what kind of teaching and learning can take place in a school. It significantly curtails what your teachers can do throughout the day. Twenty-five percent of your middle school classrooms are undersized, and twenty percent of your high school classrooms. Options. The options that we developed, we developed a logical set of options, which followed on a continuum from most conservative to most forward-leaning in terms of investment in your buildings. The most conservative approach looked at simply assuming that you were going to keep every building how it is, serving the population that it was, and that really what your focus is really a capital improvement plan of just fixing the top priorities of what's broke, what will that cost? And away you go. Up to looking at the second set of options was, I also identifying those schools that had the most significant educational adequacy needs and putting a budget towards investing some in the schools for classroom furniture fixtures and equipment to help with the teaching and learning. Knowing that you're not still moving walls at all, it's simply providing some more tools to work within the space, but definitely still not fixing the space, changing the space. The third level of options that we considered involves starting to do some priority renovations and replacements, and in your case, new construction to address the growing population on your western edge. And then the fourth option was taking a long-term view of what the recommendation would be over the long haul for all of the major renovations, replacements, if, if we were going to pursue what we ultimately believe the data tells us the recommendations are. That considered all of these different factors, and looking at the survey results, which were quite significant, where we reviewed those in an earlier presentation, and for today, tonight's purpose, what I would just remind you of is a key theme that we saw in those four thousand-ish responses, was a awareness of the need to address the condition needs of your school with a focus on identifying what the return on investment for that additional, additional, those additional monies would be. So the driving question is what investments are best for students and the community and the best value in the long term. Again, so this is the breakdown that I just went over. Option A was always comfortable and safe, if you will, that had no educational adequacy improvements, but it did address your most basic condition needs. Option B looked at all of those condition needs, so that took the ten-year view and said, we're going to do all of them. If we're going to keep our portfolio the same, and, and fix everything that's identified, how would we sequence that, and what would that cost? Option C, again, mentioned some of those initial renovations, and that took care of many of your condition needs as well as educational adequacy. In this case, the most condition needs involved replacing schools that were at those, at or approaching those thresholds of decisions in terms of renovating versus replacement. But option D is what we think the ultimate recommendation ought to be given the data, all things considered. This visual takes, perhaps takes a moment to digest, so I want to spend a moment here. This is an illustration of those four different options, and it lists the four descriptors there along the side, as I've just described in the previous slide. And then the accentuated icons there in blue call out what each of the options does, and the ones that are grayed out shows what the option does not do for you. The, the next, in the orange text there, shows what the cost per year in the timeline is, and then the total investment. The way that these were calculated is we understand what the volume of projects each of these options entails, and what timeframe is reasonable and appropriate for those needs to be addressed, given, one, the scale of the needs, and, two, the, the timeframe at which they were identified. And so option A looks at just the top three priorities of five identified, and the top three, in the first three years of five in your lifecycle. So it takes a conservative approach, paring back those priorities and lifecycle items to just those most acute and most timely. That total is two hundred and nineteen million. Executing that over a five-year period is a, an estimated forty-four million per year. This is, these are countywide statistics. We'll break down the Orange County specific details in a moment. Countywide, if you were to address all facility needs, those are over, projected over a ten-year period, that's a billion dollars, one point one, actually, and that's a hundred and ten million a year, so significant, all-in cost, and of course, cost per year, even though you're doubling the years to do it. Option C involves two renovations countywide, upgraded learning tools, some of the educational adequacy investments described for replacement schools. So this is taking the school and replacing it with, you know, rebuilding it because of condition and capacity needs in many cases, and then the one additional school, that is always in both cases, C and D, referring to an additional elementary school for you to the west of Eflin, or serving that, that serving that area. That, C totals just over half of a billion, five hundred and thirty-eight million, executed over ten-year period, comes down to about fifty-four million dollars per year. Option D is what we think the ultimate recommendation, the, comes from the data in the long term, given that volume of projects, twelve renovation projects, the upgraded educa, educational adequacy investments, eight replacement schools, and your one new elementary school. That is a volume of projects that is most appropriate for you all over about a fifteen-year period. Also, as in option B, totals about a billion dollars. Over that fifteen-year period, breaks down to about sixty-seven million per year. There we go. So this is, gives a high-level summary of that, and what this really seeks to inform and illustrate is that it's only once you start to get to renovating that you're doing anything other than putting money behind the walls and in the roofs, and in the air handlers and so forth, to modify the learning environment and do a lot that is going to be experienced by students, teachers, and the like. The first two options, a hundred percent of the money is on the priority condition needs, and option C, about a third, total forty percent, if you include some adequacy investment, is in the condition need, and the remaining sixty-plus percent is in investments that are moving forward in terms of renovating space and replacing schools and new school. And option D, you're looking at about twelve percent in condition and basic adequacy investments, and eighty-eight percent of the investments are in building, the long-term investment in terms of renovations, the thirty percent of the investment, replacement schools are at fifty-three percent of all dollars in the replacement school, the, is, the new school is at five percent of that total. So for you, the way that this breaks down, and this is a difficult slide to get all information in, for you to digest in a PowerPoint, but consider it a reference. This shows all of your schools. Option A is the budget for the priority needs, against, that's priorities one, two, and three, and life cycles one, two, and three. Option B shows all of the needs in millions for every school. Option, and this is just for Orange County. Option C shows those initial renovations, and option D is the ultimate recommended, recommended renovations over that fifteen-year period. We have begun work with Duane and his team, providing good insights. They, that only helped as our work entails working with our districts to, excuse me, create these options, also looking, started working with Duane and his team to consider appropriate phasing strategies. The phasing strategies for the options are intended to address the most acute needs for capacity and condition, so the new school is on the front side of this, while minimizing the investments you would need to make in swing space options, like putting a bunch of portals around to accommodate students during construction, prioritizing leaving prioritizing leaving kids in school environments during construction so that they're in schools and not in a bunch of trailers and minimizing the disruption to students and teachers during the time of construction. So drilling down, again, th- this is the the top-line recommendations that we have, but really we are looking. We believe that the data clearly shows that many of the conditions of your buildings point to a need for renovations and replacements as opposed to attempts to keep up with deferred maintenance, which is significantly behind in many cases. That the half of your elementary schools and twenty to twenty-five percent of your middle and high school classrooms that are undersized means that if you were to keep those, all of those buildings online and simply have a deferred maintenance approach, you would be really solidifying that those schools would be in use for decades to come with undersized learning environments that limit the kinds of teaching and learning that you can do and that is is not as good strategy for the students and for the community and especially when those condition needs are so high. So it's an all-things-considered approach, working on right sizing the portfolio, meaning that when we're replacing schools, in one case, we're looking at a newer and fewer strategy to build one, to actually add on to another school now or build another school to, one new school to replace two, and that's only in one circumstance for you all, and then to build a new school and then to enable a long-term redistricting approach that you shouldn't have to revisit again in the near future. Replacing those schools, when you build them, have a, having a standard size and a standard equitable design to to ensure that your schools are able to be well-researched, populated and that the students will have equitable experience. The phasing for you all, what we are looking at is that phase one with replacement school and new elementary school adequacy and renovations being the focuses of that where most of the money is in the replacement and new elementary school and the renovation. Looking at one hundred and sixty million. And we think of these phases as most appropriately five-year, planning for five years, knowing that the projects may spill into six or even early seven-year period. But you think of these phases as five-year efforts that where you identify the funding, you you secure your, your architects and engineers. You work through that phase and then once as that phase is concluded, reconfirm the phase-two projects, make any tweaks at that time that might be appropriate as the data suggests in that five years from now. Repeat the cycle and that every five years as a county and its districts involved in this plan, you are reevaluating this master plan for its continued relevance. Reevaluating every year can lead to a state of, my observation can lead to a state of paralysis of maybe not moving forward with it. And so really what we recommend is that the districts and county take a look at these options, these phases as recommendations rather as something to make sure you get that phase right, phase one right the way you want it and then execute, fund and repeat after reevaluating for phases two and three. So this illustrates that that phase one, how the pie is sliced, where you've got the replacement school, the new elementary station, taking the lion's share of the investment in phase one. Phase two, the lion's share, the investment is on replacing schools that have exceeded the end of the useful life, namely high school and potentially the middle school, which may switch into phase one in in some back-and-forth discussion right now. And then where your final phase is after those major replacements and new construction are done, still have some replacement coming in on the latter end of this master plan, but the majority of your focus at that point will be renovations of existing space. Timeline for the project as a whole. We are here and the, to the end of the recommendations period, we're drafting those final recommendations in our final report, discussing the particulars of timing and phasing with the districts. And anticipate providing the final phasing and timing after further input from you all and from the districts at the end of this month. With the county commissioners receiving those final recommendations on the fourth of December. And with that, I'm happy to address any questions you may have. Thank you for your time.
I'd like to thank you for your report. It's very revealing, I guess would be a good way to say it. Lots to think about. Questions from anyone?
Thank you, David, for this. It's my third time seeing it and I actually got to see you give it at Chapel Hill last week, so I can almost give it myself. I have some questions for us because as a board, we have not gotten close to this at all. And I was curious and I, even at Chapel Hill, I got the impression that their board has been going through the recommendations. And so when we look at this, so I heard a couple of things. I heard one is, does Orange County have the taxing capacity, not the debt capacity, but the taxing capacity to spend a billion dollars on new facilities? I think that's a question the county commissioners are going to be looking at. It's a hard one. I know you're helping with them. And if I remember, you know, and you even talked about getting clear about what's maintenance, what's capital, all that stuff. The question for our board is you gave us a lot of things to think about. And how do we make the decision? Do we build a new school in Meben? You know, you suggested consolidating Hillsborough Elementary and Central, which has all kinds of cultural and things that have to be thought about. The decision to replace or continue to renovate Orange Middle, Orange High School. These are all decisions that our board has not discussed. What is the process and when should we get involved in that and be talking about that?
Yeah, that's a good question. So I'd say that, you know, the, we finalize these phases, it's it's certainly appropriate at this point to understand that these recommendations are getting real, that we are getting towards the end. And this is a great meeting right now to engage with some thoughtful questions on those. When we present the the report to the counties at the end of this month and then the commissioners on the fourth. What I anticipate is that, you know, the county commissioned the study. And and so we're delivering to them on the, on our timeframe on schedule these recommendations on the fourth. And I believe that making you all aware of where we are, why we're recommending, what we're recommending and to engage with us in some, some conversation about that now. And we'll, we'll tee you up to work with the county once we deliver those recommendations in early December. And that my recommendation to the county is is a multiple, couple-fold. One, as you alluded to, that the capital program for your schools be considered in two basic buckets. Ongoing operations and major capital needs. And that the county strongly consider and explore options. And I know that they are, folks are, are looking at this in different ways now. What it could look like to have dedicated maintenance and operations funding diff, you know, at a, at a higher level perhaps than what you've had that are in that track of O and M, maintenance and operations, the priority repairs. And then to be able to focus the indebtedness of the major cap, the major expenses on, on your renovations and new construction solely and wholly, so that you're able to put more bank debt capacity for that. The billion dollars spread out over fifteen years. It with any kind of debt instrument, this would be, it would be several different issuances that would add up to that total need over that longer period of time. And what we recommend is that the county proceed with the initial phases of this and target that five-year period. And then, you know, it's, it's up to the county to, to look at the feasibility of that, given, given all of their factors to consider, but we are actively having that conversation now. Well, in regards to phase one, I'll take a moment, Bonnie, and just get into some of the particulars on this one. This one is a little in the flux in that we are currently looking at with Duane and his team, where Gravely Hill was projected and initially recommended for a renovation, major renovation, given some of the adequacy challenges that we noted in our assessment. In continuing to have that discussion with the, with the district, we're looking at moving that, actually taking that priority likely with Orange Middle, just given the, the total condition needs there. And pushing that towards the latter end of, of the master plan as some needs there in adequacy do exist, but all things considers, there are, there are needs that are rising higher on total condition and adequacy in others. So that's one item that's in flux. With the new elementary school, that is solidly in phase one. I don't see that going anywhere in the coming weeks. That is to provide capacity relief and prepare for that, get that going in time to, to provide that relief without the crowding getting too much of a, further of an issue over on that side of town. And insofar as possible, getting that school closer to the population that where it's growing. With Hillsborough and Central, talking about now is an amendment to that initial total rebuild option, given the investments in Central that are underway there with HVAC. To, we are exploring with Duane and his team, we went through options to actually do a partial, we call it partial, replacement, partial reno demo new, where take off a smaller section of that building and build a newer section, multi-story section of that building, which would accommodate some of the grading challenges and make good use of that on the site by doing multi-story, providing much more square foot and in making sure we don't lose the investments that you have made in that historic building and looking, exploring options in the, on the Hillsborough site where the commitment in the discussion has been we're retaining that site and as a community asset. And there are some different ideas that are in the nascent stages about what those assets might be, given other county projects, what they've heard from the community needs are, but certainly making sure that the the history of the school and the schools there both are elevated in the design, that the design is done with local constituents to inform that keeping that, the stories alive in the physical structure and, and how, how it's, how it's developed. So I'll think I'll stop there for a moment. I know I went on for, rambled for a bit. But the summary in brief again is one, provide your feedback now, provide your feedback with the county, with the final report will be delivered to you and that the county, we recommend the county be engaging with you shortly, shortly after the fourth to look at feasibility and your sort of consensus on these initial phases.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hauser.
I don't, not Ms. Hauser, Ms. Spohley.
Totally fine. Okay, so I'm going to ask a couple like specific questions from the option summary about specific schools. One is, okay, so New Hope, I see that in option B, which is like, if we fixed everything, it would be forty-six million dollars. But that what you're proposing in this is to address the adequacy issues and I just, I'm concerned. Are there, does that school not have priority needs or?
Yeah, so that's an excellent observation. So when you see what the adequacy is in practice, what that means is that it's taking the priority condition needs in option A and adding to that investments in learning tools in the classroom, furniture, fixtures, equipment. You know, desks, tables, chairs, whiteboard projectors, you name it. We do not attempt to prescribe what those are. What we did is we looked at the total adequacy scores for each of the buildings and identified those schools that had the highest total needs relative to missing space, learning environments and the sizes of those environments and looking to compensate for that with additional investments in the environments that exist to buy more robust tools and, and, and learning infrastructure. The reason there's such a big disconnect between the thirteen million and forty-six in particular is that a lot of the needs identified in New Hope Elementary are life cycle needs in your years six through ten. That's why that number is so high. And so what you're talking about, I, I do not have the the back end of the assessment open at my fingertips right now, but those major systems, roofs, mechanicals, electrical plumbing. When they hit the end of their life, they, they cause that price to spike. So that's what you're looking at. I hope I answered your question. If not, please tell me.
And so those things are factored into the proposal in option D? No, so, but if it's a fifteen-year proposal, wouldn't that life cycle be hit and we would need to add those things in?
Yeah, it's an excellent question again. And, and so what this, the logic of this option does in option C or D is it assumes that you are not going to be able to prioritize the funds that in an ideal world you would for every system replacement and renovation in time. And so in essence, in practice, you are planning to continue to carry some measure of deferred maintenance. However, by addressing the most acute needs of those systems in these schools, you are looking to want to address the, the, the most closest needs and shoot. And then in time, the idea is as you take care of those most acute needs, most time-sensitive needs, when your condition, your maintenance and operations can focus on extending the useful life of these buildings. A twenty-five-year roof. In an ideal world, you're budgeting in year twenty-five to replace it. In practice, many of us homeowners might have a twenty-five-year roof and it's on year twenty-eight. And it's okay. You kept it up. We've trimmed the trees. We've done that kind of thing. That doesn't mean you shouldn't budget for it. But given the sum of the total needs, what the strategy in C and D is to say, you know what, we can afford to fix everything we would, in an ideal world, want to do at every school. There are some schools where we absolutely believe we need to get out of Dodge and rebuild it or renovate it. And the most practical way to do that And the most practical way to do that is to plan to continue to have some deferred maintenance, but have less overall condition needs along the way.
Okay, thanks for that explanation. I think that my reaction to it is when I look at the differential for New Hope between its option B and its option D, it's a much bigger gap. And I know it's much more complicated than, you know, in option B, it is one of the schools with some of the highest needs, and yet it would be receiving some of this like relatively smaller investments in this model. And I and I'm uncomfortable with the idea of if we're asking for a billion dollars in this model, not budgeting in that for if if the time is right to need a new roof or HVAC or whatever, I can't imagine why we wouldn't. Like some schools are going to, it's not like everybody's going to get a cookie, like we have to make choices. I get that, but the idea that some schools will get a brand-new building that's like top of the line, and then this one is going to have that level of deferred maintenance built in, I have a problem with. So that's my reaction to that particular piece.
And that's that's a fair, that's a fair observation. And where the decision points, where we look at these decision points is the the confluence of condition relative to replacement or the FCI value, the you, the educational adequacy scores. And and so in the utilization, when you look at all of those different factors, those schools that are prioritized for renovation or replacement have the highest needs in those respects. And the reality is is that we twofold. One, when we recommend that the county look at a dedicated M and O stream separate from sort of a bond strategy or an indebtedness strategy, the idea there is that you certainly do need a higher level of ongoing funding to successfully keep up with your O and M. The 13 million identified would be accommodated and then some through a ongoing M and O dedicated stream. And that as we look toward the end of this master plan cycle, many of those schools that received, the older schools in particular, your elementary schools in particular even more, will be up for replacement themselves.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question I'd like to ask.
Yes, ma'am.
Gravely Hill Middle School is is not a very old school. And you have that it needs a $48.5 million renovation.
Yes, ma'am.
And Central Elementary is an old school, and you're talking about replacing it for $49 million. So I I'm just wondering what what at Gravely Hill needs so much work that it's $48 million?
Yeah, that that is a very good question, and that is why that one is one option that has received the most scrutiny since the development of our initial options here and one that in our most recent meetings just last week, we, I can tell you, we are amending that one in particular and looking at putting that towards the end, at the end of the priorities in sort of the in the phase three. The reason why it was put up there, one, it's it's a it's a large, it's a similar cost as Central, just because it's a larger physical school, you know, and the cost of renovating that is modeled at 75% the cost of the new school for that same square footage. Because it is such a larger square footage, its its renovation value is commensurate with our elementary school replacement, just given the size. So that's the math on that. The reason it was identified, that I alluded to this a bit ago, was just the adequacy score that is just the undersized number, number of under, excuse me, undersized spaces relative to the standards for the middle schools today with Stark in our initial assessment. And so we wrestled back and forth internally in my team about what to do with that. It is not that old, but the when you look at the the adequacy score when factoring in the size of the spaces, it stood out to us. And so we we tossed it out there to get get initial feedback on that as a major renovation. And because this is an iterative process, and we look at something and we look at it again and again, when we reviewed this again last week, we made the determination with the district that really in terms of middles, in total condition needs and middle schools in particular, Orange's needs, Orange Middle School needs were higher in total priority, total needs right now, and that we pushed that towards faith to phase three of the project and move Orange Middle's replacement to phase one.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions, Ms. Hauser?
Yeah, so I'm trying to understand the decision-making process that we will go through because I feel like the first thing we have to hear from Orange County is how much money they're going to spend on phase one, the first five years. So which might be something less, obviously, there's our schools, I don't remember what Chapel Hill number is. But, you know, if we did, you know, they're actually, what is what is our, what is our recommendation for phase one?
The total, the total for phase one, yeah, across both counties. You know, we're we're looking at this, this option C is phase one, essentially, we're a little bit less than that now. And so you'd say, oh, I'm sorry, Bonnie, I should have.
You said option C.
Option C, yeah, you got 200 million. It's it's about the same in Chapel Hill on an order of magnitude.
Got it. So that's where the county, is that what we're talking to the county about, and you're showing?
That's correct.
Our, our phase one is about 160 million for our five, obviously, you said we're going to change Gravely and Orange Middle, which is going to make a little bit higher. But that's the conversations that are happening right now. The the focus is on phase one.
That's correct.
And then is it a separate conversation about maintenance?
Yes, it is.
Because we still have, go ahead.
Yeah, that's correct. And so you're right, you're you're phase one now, when we swap it out, it's 170 something. It's it's a bit more, but but on the order of magnitude, not significantly. And then the discussion is, you know, with working with, and there are folks working on, you know, trying to see what might be options, what are options for you all to the county to bifurcate M and O and capital funding to to allow you to focus those precious indebtedness resources on these major capital needs.
Right. So we have to hear from, because I I don't know, you know, where our board is, do we need to have an in-depth work session with Dwayne and the company to talk about these projects? Or we want after the, after we hear where the county's going, I mean, you know?
I think that's appropriate, Bonnie, is that we, and and I probably didn't say this, explain it well, that once we deliver these reports, this final report on the Fourth of December to the county commissioners, that I think that is the time immediately on the immediately on the heels of that to engage in those conversations and to solidify the agreement or amendment to the recommendations in the report and with the county. And again, you'll see some of those are the the changes that I noted tonight reflected in your phase one. My, my advice on this would be that you're really focusing on funding and executing phase one right now. And you're targeting that five to seven-year period, which I think is a reasonable timeframe. If that needs, has to extend a little bit, and I'll let you all determine what that is, a year or two, then I think the plan can stay intact. If we're talking about a significant difference in funding opportunity, then that will set up a whole new set of conversation. I do think that what we've identified here, we've taken pains to provide a list of recommendations that are not a pie in the sky, not a wish list, not a, a big list of wants, but a really thoughtful prioritize list of projects that start you on a longer term, more sure footing on your facilities. And I think insofar as the, you know, we can is to have those robust conversations to find, basically to answer the question, can we find the money for phase one in the next five to seven years and focus on that?
Yep, thank you.
Anything else? Yeah, Ms. Molly?
I do have another one. I think another one that I noticed is that Stanback is slated for the third phase of this. And I know that there's some work that I keep hearing about repeatedly related to the HVAC systems and the ability to like control the air and have the temperatures be in the right place in that building. So that's a thing on my mind, and then I'm thinking, wow, does that mean that project, for example, wouldn't get addressed until like 10 years from now?
No, I, again, great question. Ongoing condition, you know, needs to, you know, we've got an HVAC system that needs. That is something that really should be considered out of an ongoing O and M funding stream. What is recommended in phase three for Stanback is a major renovation going in and blowing out systems that are at the end of the useful life by that point? And not just putting it all back together the way that the building is, but redoing the building from the interior, keeping those investments that you have made in the infrastructure that are still worth investing and keeping in. And by that point, if HVAC system needs replaced before then, you do it. But you use maintenance, ongoing maintenance dollars for that, and you're saving the major capital renovation, blowing out the walls, redoing all of the the interiors, carpets and what have you, and fittings for that 15, you know, that 10 to 15-year horizon.
Okay, that makes sense. I think one thought I have here is it would be interesting to know what the total cost of all of that is. So if there are certain like replacement pieces that we know we're not getting, that just aren't covered here or would need to happen sooner, and the assumption is that they're in the maintenance budget, like what is the total maintenance budget also that the county needs to be prepared for? Because that, you know, even if it's different funding sources, like at the end of the day, it's, you know, a total number of dollars.
And that's that's fair, and that's something that we can, we can work with the county to identify.
Okay. Just one more question, one less.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yeah. Yes, Mr. Atherton, go ahead.
So a question I have is the actual next presenter on our agenda is coming to us and telling us, based on their report and the projections, that within two to three years, we'd be completely out of capacity at our elementarys, completely. And I looked through, you know, the original options, return on investments, two of them say no additional, you know, capacity for schools for A and B, right?
That's correct.
And then I know your recommendations is to go in the phased approach, but I mean, I, the concern I have is the need is within two to three years based on, you know, projections of growth in our area. Means we're going to have an immediate need, and I believe the recommendation is to to build a school, right?
That's correct, sir.
So how, and I know that's listed in in phase one, when y'all are talking to the the county commissioners about this, is there an understanding about why that is a, you know, a forward recommendation based on capacity versus, this isn't like, hey, we'd like to have it because there's a building we'd like to replace, it's a capacity issue more than any other issue we have at this point?
That's correct. That that is, that has been made plain and understood, and that's why that's consistently in top priorities for you all, and it's why in the entire of the county master plan right now, a new elementary school for you is the only new school for capacity in this, in this billion-dollar recommendation. And it is front-loaded for that reason. You anticipate that a project of this nature is really a two- to three-year project depending upon a variety of procurement factors. It is something to take on sooner rather than later.
So so I guess the the only other point I was curious about, if the commissioners are asking about option A or B, they're they're not realistic, right? Because of that issue, because there's no recommendation in A or B for return on investment options to expand a school or to add capacity to the schools, it's really just maintaining buildings, but that we have an immediate issue, right?
That's correct, sir. And and the way that we develop these options with the county is, and and your, your team and Chapel Hill's team, was that it's a series of thought experiments.
Okay.
What if we were just to focus on the highest, most acute, near-term condition needs? What if we were going to take care of all the condition needs? What if we were going to start down the road of renovation? And what what would the ultimate recommendation be, given the data? What would that look like to get out of where we are in terms of, you know, really a point of deferred maintenance, you're not going to catch up? Point blank, you're not going to catch up on many of these schools. You don't have the capacity in places where you need it. The buildings do not have many of the right learning environments that you would recommend educating kids in 20 years from now, 10 years from now, in many cases. And and so you don't want to make a 20, 30-year investment in infrastructure in a in a school that isn't adequate to your needs for that period of time. And so all things considered, we do not believe that option A and B make sense.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Do you have one quick question?
Yeah, it's kind of, you know, Will's question touched on a little bit, so let's say we said go, how quickly could an elementary school in Meven be built?
Again, I'd say that's a, 18 months is as fast as you're going to get, it's unrealistic, two to three years.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, this, this is a great report, but it all depends on our working with county commissioners and where we're, where we're going to go with this. But we appreciate what we're hearing tonight, and it certainly is something to think about, long-range and short-range plans. So we appreciate you being here, we appreciate you doing this, and we will see you again soon, I'm sure.
Yes, ma'am. Stay tuned.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you so much. Dr. Merrill?
Yeah, I'd like to propose an adjustment to agenda. I've taken the liberty, without changing the agenda through a motion, of of moving beginning teacher support program to next month. And we do have a presenter here related to the indoor air quality report, perhaps we can do that, then jump back on the ORED. I don't know if that fits your lineup, Dwayne, whether that can work or not, but.
We can get more to that direction, sure.
At your pleasure, however.
That is fine with me, Dr. Merrill.
The rest of the board, okay?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Kevin, I'll get you assistance here. I have some sharing, but I don't see it there.
What are you trying to show?
His PowerPoint.
Which is?
It's, it's, it's video. But it's not here, yeah.
Okay, so I'm click the X. Let's go back to your desktop. Exit from screen. All right.
It's there. It's that one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which one? Okay. Perfect. All right. So now get to zoom again.
All right, now we're ready. Yeah, got it. Thank you for that. All right, I'll turn things over to Dr. Kersio to discuss our, uh, fall, uh, indoor air quality report, uh, processes and recommendations, uh, from this fall.
That's the next one. That's the next one. That's the next.
Okay. As I said, we're going to try to do this quite quickly now. Why is indoor air quality important? Primarily because it's linked to the health and well being of the students especially and the staff as well. The student performance, I'm sorry, thank you. Student performance can be tied closely to the quality of the air. And actually increasing in, the indoor air quality improves student performance in a number of things. And I've heard a lot about that tonight as well as reducing absenteeism. The overview, which is important because I've heard a lot in these last month or so about how does Orange County stack up against Alamance for what they went through. And we can get into that later on. But essentially, the most important thing is you can't compare the two systems. Orange County has been doing systematic indoor air quality checks for 20 years. Alamance County goes, oh my God, we saw mold. And there's a huge difference there, not the least of which is Alamance is paying about $18 million to correct the mistakes they thought they had a few months ago. So it gets complicated pretty quickly. What's important with Orange County is that every school has had issues with indoor air quality. And every school has had those issues resolved easily and in a very straightforward manner, not a panic mode. My background of PhD toxicology, I've been doing human toxicology for 40 something years now. I'm happy to say I'm retiring after this presentation. You know, what we've tried to stress over the years, especially with Orange County, is that when you're building an indoor air quality program, you really need to rely on everybody. Can't be Larry going through the schools twice a year with his meters. Can't be Dwayne and his group doing it. It has to be the teachers, the faculty, the administration, the maintenance especially is important as well as the custodians and the parents. And I'll go into some of those a moment, in a moment. When we do the pro, when we do the samples, it's simply, we're walking through the entire school. We pick areas over time which we special, we specify, we're going to do some in-depth testing of this particular area, whether it's all the gyms one time or all the HVAC maintenance, I'm sorry. The, the maintenance, uh, mechanical rooms. If so, or we're going to just start doing, uh, certain sections of each school. I've heard a lot about the 15 year plan. And I can see some agreement. We're seeing some agreement with what schools really need to get moved, uh, moved quickly through that. When we do the walkthrough, we're really looking for visual clues. And you can see when I start to see air, uh, the air registers, this is a return, that's filthy. I took a sample of it. You can see my fingerprint causing that light spot in the middle of the dirt. You can also see staining on the ceilings. And a lot of schools have this problem now. And it's important, don't change the little white ceiling tile. Find out why you have a stain there and repair that before you start going ahead. Maintenance and the mechanical rooms, a lot of the piping is in need of repair. And this is, these are early slides. So you're, you know, you can see where the school is really, the school system has done an excellent job in cleaning a lot of this stuff up. Also, we're, we focus a lot on the HVAC systems, the registers for returns, but more importantly, the supply side. That's the air you're breathing. So when it's that filthy, and I'll just call what it is, you're breathing in all the dirt and dust associated with it. And a lot of staff are saying, I'm allergic to mold, when in fact the dust levels can be so high in the airborne counts that they're reacting to that more than anything else. Contributors to air quality, mold and mildew, obviously, as well as a lot of other issues. When we do the sampling, we're, we're looking for the mold counts and seeing what's higher than usual. What we can do about that, especially if we're starting to see in a certain area. But we're also looking at room temperature. We do surface sampling. We're also measuring CO2. And I've noticed in this past time at another system, another school system, that with the change in temperatures, a lot of the teachers were shutting their HVAC units off. The room was packed with kids. So where you have CO2 levels that are normally 500, 600, we were seeing them in 4,000 and 5,000. And that is a level that is unhealthy. And we, and we need to change that. And I talked to the maintenance folks and we got that resolved right away. We do observation. We do make recommendations and reports. You've all seen the reports. So you'll see what our recommendations are. What's frustrating, to be honest, is many of those findings you'll see in the reports, the repeat findings. We can only say it so many times, we're not part of the school system. But it is important to understand that when we make a, make a recommendation, it really needs to be adhered to. The reporting, you have the reports, so we're not going to go into any of this. But we do try to prioritize, uh, for the school system themselves, the maintenance department and others. What's the severity of finding? What's the urgency to fix that? And then to also evaluate to, uh, parent, student, teacher complaints about the air quality. And we do build in time to remediate and find out really, how can we make a positive influence right there? These are slides you've already seen. One of the examples we had, the parents were real happy about building gardens around all the schools. It looked pretty, but you're not getting the building to breathe at all. So, you know, the gardens were, well, you can see what they were. And we just said, you guys have really got to cut them down. And so we got the building exterior cleaned up quite a bit. I'm a big fan of, we don't need carpeting in classrooms, but I, I'm, I'm getting too old to fight certain battles. You do need to though, think about how you're going to have the floors covered going forward, especially, uh, the carpeting is not your friend. Student, the teachers enjoy having a lot of plants. Some of these rooms will look like the South African forest, rainforest. Have a little bit of moderation, especially with aquaria, uh, plants, things like that. And where you have refrigerators for the staff to have their food in. Many, many times the, uh, the molding around the refrigerators is covered, uh, the molding on the refrigerator is covered in mold. So need to be careful of that. Air quality, this is a good example. Some classrooms have HVAC systems that are up against the wall. That's your sole source of fresh air. And when you have that kind of display, uh, this, the classroom is not getting any air whatsoever. Mold loves paper. Mold spores thrive. That's their food source. So we're all, you know, when we come across a room that has a lot of paper clutter, we talk to the teacher and encourage them. Is there anything you can do to get rid of some of this? Because you're not helping yourself out there. I had said earlier about the HVAC registers, that's the supply side that is feeding a classroom. There are air quality issues at certain schools that need to be corrected. And I'm working closely with the maintenance department on making those changes occur. There is a program to correct the causes of this. And that was one of the biggest differences between Orange County and Alamance Burlington school system. They don't have a plan. They still don't. They reacted to, we've got to close all these schools, which you did not have to do. And you certainly didn't need to spend $18 million, but just the way they panicked, said, bring people in. They, they basically brought in the people who, who were doing the testing. And then they also recommend their own remediation programs. So it was like, how many times can I get a check out of this particular school? It's just the wrong way to do it. When, uh, so we're really trying to focus on, it requires the support of everybody. It's not just the maintenance department. It's not just, you know, someone like myself coming in and doing testing twice a year. And we're making progress on that. So that's, I'm sorry to move through it quickly, but I was getting a little brain dead back there. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Ms. Smiley.
Okay. Thank you so much for this report. I appreciate the thoroughness. And I'm glad that we're measuring CO2. Um, I saw that the, the CO2 you're reporting sort of the average level. Did you, did that, was that unoccupied spaces and occupied? Or did you only measure?
That's an average for, that's the air quality guidance documents that come out of EPA and OSHA. And they're saying, you know, it's not bad to have an indoor air quality of somewhere between 500 and 700 parts per million.
Yeah.
And that doesn't really take into account occupied versus unoccupied. If it's unoccupied, you expect it to be lower, 3, 400. If it's very occupied, you go above 1,000.
Okay.
But we will flag it at 1,000 to say, something has to be done.
I think that makes a lot of sense. Um, I guess I'm wondering specifically, this might not be a question for you, what, there were places where the CO2 was pretty high. So what is being done about that in those buildings?
I'm sorry, I couldn't.
The, the, where the, where the CO2 levels were high?
Oh, yeah.
In terms of the remediation plan, like how are, is there a plan to?
Start your HVAC units back up.
Yeah.
That's especially true. And the, and these were mistakes that were being made by teachers who just said, you know, I don't need the air conditioner on today or the heater. So they, they had the ability to shut them off. And when we called maintenance, they came over and said, start them up again. CO2 is a real straightforward, uh, issue. You, you increase the fresh airflow and, and that's about it.
Yeah. Thank you. I think, you know, my other reaction here is really to the idea that some of these were repeat recommendations and that we're not seeing the like consistent cleaning of the air handler or whatever, the different places, you know, that like, that's just a real concern to me. And I want to know, you know, what is our quality control, what do we do now? You know, like what is our quality control process to change that? Because it's very frustrating to see that these have been recommendations that have not been remediated.
Sure. Appreciate that, Ms. Smiley. Uh, we have put together, uh, a plan for 30 to 60 day plan that will allow the remediations and remedies to occur. There are some things that can be done internally by maintenance team. Others require third party vendor, uh, which we have to schedule and get in, uh, primarily. So we've, uh, maintenance team has put that together and have identified the timeline for those, identified the work orders for those to get it, to get them all resolved.
Okay. And then the piece that's like every quarter, these, you know, HVAC parts need to be cleaned. Like what is the plan for that ongoing work, not the like massive remediation?
Yeah. I mean, ultimately that's, we have to pinpoint that which we have with our maintenance team and with our, uh, maintenance crews in order to get that work done, uh, on a regular basis. So we've developed that timeline spreadsheet that we can track and be able to follow. So that's, uh, we can kind of check it off as we go.
I guess I just really thought we had something like that already.
Years ago, we purchased HVAC vacuum cleaners for every school. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We purchased HVAC vacuums for each school. We trained the custodians on, you know, how to reach up and vacuum these things off and capture it with the HVAC system. You're not going to let any dust go out the back end. So it was a very good system. As far as I know, all those HVAC vacuums have walked away. And we can also see when we go into any building, whether they're maintaining a quarterly cleaning and the answer is no. Whether that is Dwayne's issue or it's the principal's issue, because I believe the custodians report through the principals. That's something that just needs to be emphasized.
Okay, great. Thank you. I would, I mean, I'd just love an update on what our plan is to, you know, I, I know the aspiration has been to clean all of this stuff on some schedule, but like what's going to be different in our quality control or oversight?
Sure, we can provide that. Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Ma, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
So I have a, yeah, I have a follow on to what Sarah's asking about. One of the things the board did about two and it, two-ish years ago was we created a position called the head custodian at each school with the responsibility of the facilities and reporting these, making sure everything's in working order, windows, doors, you know, all of these. So to, to Sarah's point, I definitely too would like to see an update because you know, what I do like about the summary, you do see schools that are still coming in as fair over multiple, uh, terms. And I, I, I personally think we've got to address these fair very quickly because it's, it's, it's just not acceptable. I mean, some of these are things that, um, like Sarah said, are reoccurring. And I would definitely like to see what the remediation are on these and the long term. Because some of the, some of the recommendations in here is, you know, reporting. And the question is, you know, it talks about parents and teachers and all of these people, different groups being able to have reporting. And how's that tracked? I mean, we normally see it when it comes to Facebook, you know, so I definitely like to see what, what our plans are to address the short term and long term as well.
Yes, we'll be able to provide that timeline and, uh, do those identify corrections, both again internally and throughout third party vendors. It also is tracked through our work order system too, that we'll be able to pinpoint and pull those, uh, items, uh, that are completed, uh, and provide the timeline to the board for those, for those corrections.
Yeah, I just want to add my echo, my concerns on that. When I first came on the board, the first thing I saw was one of your reports. And we had this great report and nothing was done. And as a board member, we can't tell if we haven't gotten a report or if nothing has happened.
It boils down to risk management and governance, because most of my work is with board level.
Oh, yeah, but it's not, it's not your fault. It's not.
No, no, I know, but it's governance. You know, how are you following up on the, on the issues that need to be addressed?
So what is an appropriate level of reporting back to the board and even to the public about what is the state of the remediation that's happening in our schools?
Yeah, again, ultimately it's providing you that timeline so you can see what has occurred as a result of the recommendations that, uh, Dr. Kersio's report reveals.
So you actually give us a list of, when you say timeline, I think of schedule, but you're saying a?
Right, timeline in terms of what has been completed.
Got it.
When the vendor has scheduled for us, because they, vendor may not be able to get in tomorrow, maybe a couple of weeks. And you can kind of see the check off based off the recommendations from the report.
Great. Well, I look forward to that. Thank you. All right.
Thank you both very much. And we appreciate it.
Do we need a motion to extend?
We are, yes, I was going to ask for that. Would you like to make that motion?
I am fine with that. How much time do we think we need to extend by? Quite a bit still. A motion to extend by half an hour to start. I think that's probably not sufficient, but that's my motion, 30 minutes.
Do I have a second? Okay, Dr. All in favor?
Aye.
Dr. Moore?
Aye.
Thank you.
This is great. I'm doing great.
All right, let's keep it moving at this time. We'll have, uh, from ORIT, Thomas Dudley and, and Brian Godfrey, presenting on the additional draft reassignment maps based off feedback from the board, reassignment committee, uh, as well as, uh, uh, the public. Both Thomas and Brian will dive into the data associated with how those maps, additional draft map options were created as well.
All right, thank you, Mr. Foster, Chair Purcell, and the members of the board, as mentioned, I'm Thomas Dudley with ORED. I'm joined by my colleague, Mr. Brian Godfrey. This evening's presentation will provide the second draft of your assignment plan. We begin with the guiding force behind this assignment plan, which is your Board Policy 4150. It contains four pillars. We have student achievement, stability, proximity, and operational efficiency. Again, this is what drives the assignment plan both, both draft one and draft two. Next, we have a discussion of, excuse me, next we have a discussion of school capacities, especially at the elementary school level. As school capacities are critical to any assignment plan, we're going to outline in detail what these different definitions mean. Since, uh, the previous board meeting, these capacities have been recalculated to reflect what we're calling now adjusted capacities, and the associated adjusted utilizations that you'll see as part of these following summary tables. Before proceeding further, when I say utilizations, I just mean how, to what extent these, uh, schools are being utilized, so just the enrollment or projected enrollment of the school divided by the capacity of the school. Various methods have been used to determine the amount of space available at each of these schools, and for the purposes of reassignment, two capacity numbers are provided, and that's for context, for comparison's sake. Neither of these contains Hillsborough Elementary, as it's not, uh, considered for changes as part of this reassignment plan. The capacities that we saw last time are what we're calling the SAPFO capacities, with a total system-wide, uh, seat count at the elementary school level of three thousand and eighty-three seats. The new capacities, as of this board meeting, are the adjusted capacities, and the primary difference between these two sets of capacities is the handling of pre-K, uh, class, dedicated classrooms, uh, is more thoroughly examined as part of the adjusted capacity. The difference between these two sets of capacities is nearly three hundred and fifty students, or seats, excuse me, three hundred and fifty seats. And with that, we will, uh, move on, knowing that this is the additional context pertaining to capacities. With that, we'll move on to draft one, at the elementary school level. This is what you saw last time, simply draft one, presented two weeks ago. To speak to the symbology, we have the blue lines, which are the existing elementary school attendant zones. In the background color, the solid fill is the, the actual plan itself for what the attendant zones would be. I'll also point you to the high-resolution versions of these maps, which are also attached to this board item. At this level, you can see the reduction of Eflin Cheeks to make room for initial new developments and to handle the overcrowding that exists there now. Collins Ridge is sent to Pathways, and Pathways attendant zone now, in this proposal, stretches down into River Park's attendant zone. Those are the major changes, and with those, we will pull up the summary statistics to this. For this scenario, you can see, here we've listed the adjusted capacity in that third column, and over to the right, you can see as well, the, uh, current adjusted utilization, as well as the scenario adjusted utilization. From there, we'll move to draft two, editing and working from the first draft elementary scenario. Beginning from there, there are several modifications, including Chertan Grove going to Pathways, the elimination of several satellites, and those changes aside, this is similar to draft one. And we'd also like to show the summary information pertaining to this scenario as well. There's a lot of information here, so I will pause there just for a moment before moving on to high school. Again, as part of this assignment plan recommendation from, uh, the ORED group, we are not recommending any changes at the middle school level. Moving on to high school, this is the draft one scenario that you've seen, and that was presented previously. Uh, we see changes both on the western side of Hillsborough, or excuse me, the western side of the district, and the eastern side of the district. On the west, that's to help balance utilization by adding more students to Cedar Ridge. In the east, it's a similar story, but that also aligns the high school line, uh, with the middle school feeder pattern. Again, this slide is nothing new, just simply the draft one scenario summary statistics that you saw last time. In addition to the information that was provided last time at the high school level, we've added two additional high school scenarios based on the feedback that we received. The first, we're calling two A, uh, meaning draft two scenario A, and this scenario only cleans up the feeder pattern that's on the eastern side of the district at the high school level to align that line with what the middle school line is on that side of the district. The summary information is also provided as part of the next slide. With that, we'll also move on to scenario two B, which eliminates the satellites that we currently have, uh, that are on the far western side of the district, assigning those students to Cedar Ridge by also, uh, more precisely truly connecting those satellites to the rest of the Cedar Ridge attendant zone. You can see also on this slide, the two B summary statistics. With that, I will more formally ask if there are any board, uh, questions or discussion on this topic.
Question, Ms. Smalley?
Um, one of the things we talked about last time, I see there aren't any recommended changes to middle school, one of the things we talked about was whether the feeder patterns would be disrupted by the new elementary school maps to the middle schools, and whether it warranted redrawing the middle school maps. Did you all look at that?
That is something we'll need to follow up on for, uh, an additional meeting.
Okay.
But thank you for revisiting that.
Yeah, I think as we get closer to what the elementary maps are, they will certainly impact the feeder. I just want to make sure that the feeder patterns are adjusted for middle schools as well.
I have several questions, I'll try and keep some of them simple. You heard, I don't, you were here when the, we had members of the public speaking about the link of the, especially the elementary schools to student achievement. If you look at the data using the adjusted capacity, not only do we end up, after moving everybody around, we end up with many schools at over a hundred percent capacity, but we don't end up with a balance on student achievement. So how should we, what do we do about that?
I will say, uh, to the first part of that point, uh, we, we found it critical to include both sets of capacities, because there are different ways of looking at, uh, these schools and what their effective capacities are. To the second part of that point... I'm sorry, could you repeat the point?
But, I'm sorry, it's late, I know. Um, the student achievement, you know, even how did we, how did you, how are you measuring student achievement? And, and, um, what is our goal in balancing student achievement with this process?
Absolutely. So what, the data that we used as part of this process for balancing student achievement was looking at the reading test scores for third-grade students, looking back several years, but, uh, sort of culminating with last school year and what test scores were available as part of that data set. Balancing proficiency can be a, a real challenge in districts with especially just how populations tend to be distributed geographically. I recognize, uh, the challenges of this, and what we tried to avoid as part of this assignment plan is creating more satellites.
Yeah.
And that's exactly what happened when we, when we tried to thread the needle closer, uh, was we were seeing scenarios where there were significant satellite-ing, and that becomes an issue for transportation specifically. I will say, having the benefit of, of working across districts, we, we certainly do see school districts that have significant proficiency differences in between their schools.
Yeah.
And I, I don't believe that Orange County is immune to that, but the overall range and the, the deviations that you see between your schools is not, regionally, it is, there are no extremes compared to what we see in other districts. That, that is a bit of context from other districts that, that we'd like to provide. And that, that information about school lower-level proficiency data is publicly available, it's from DPI, it's, uh, a reliable data source, and I would, I would encourage anyone with questions regarding that topic to explore that data set.
Right. Just one more?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, it's, it's partly transportation, but partly the, I want to call it the extremeness of the model. So if, you know, I look at Eflin, you know, it's, you know, we've cut off the top and we're sending it off to, so I think we're sending it to Central, we've cut off the bottom, and we've sent it off to Grady Brown, and then we end up with a hundred percent, over a hundred percent capacity at these schools, and Eflin is way smaller, and now, we've just heard that we may be building a school in Meben, which would alleviate, you know, and, and I don't know if, first, if I should, we should ask you to model what this might look like if, with a school in Meben, if that's done in three years, just as a scenario. And, but also, if we were not quite as, I, I want to call it extreme, if we were a little bit more subtle, said, like, what would we have to do for the next year? And, well, let me qualify this. I think you all know that we're redoing SAPFO, and we're going to go to an annual, those counties going to an annual assessment, and would that be the time to be revisiting the assignment? And say, do we need to change the assignment, rather than do something for an unpredictable five years? I mean, I, I don't know, it's just a question. There's many variables here, you're the modelers, you know, and, and, you know, we, we have, we, our job is to make sure the schools are running well, right? And this, it's going to be pretty disruptive, so, just trying to understand how to, how to look at all that. Plus, transportation.
So I will mention that, uh, if it's the pleasure of the board, we'd be glad to look at potential scenarios in terms of, uh, redistricting with a new school in the west, absolutely. Um, that's one point. Revisiting reassignment on a yearly basis, um, for districts that are experiencing growth, especially uneven growth, uh, that can certainly be a valuable thing. And that's even, it's even more true when you have less wiggle room among what your effective capacities are versus the size of your student populations.
So, so the essence of the question is, if we were doing this less, more frequently, if we were looking at this more frequently, would you, would the, would the districts look different? Would they be less, less change than you're proposing here?
Uh, less change overall each year, making more incremental changes, I'm inferring, instead of, uh, looking at this every, say, five years, something like that. Yeah, that's absolutely my impression of how this has worked across different districts, yes, absolutely.
Okay, any other thoughts, Ms. Smalley?
Um, yeah, I mean, just a reaction to the elementary scenarios, I just don't think we should go with any scenario where, where some of the schools are over a hundred percent in adjusted utilization. I think those are real functions in the buildings that we pulled out, the EC and, uh, language and pre-K, and that is, that is the real capacity that we're realistically dealing with. So I just don't, I don't think that that's workable. And then, one other reaction, I mean, it just stands out to me how different the proficiency level at River Park specifically is here. And that, uh, district, that zone is sitting right next to some other zones that have pretty different proficiency levels, and, uh, capacities need to be adjusted. So I don't know, that, that one particularly, the, the rest of them are closer to each other, um, and that one is standing out to me, just wanted to share that comment.
And when you're mentioning the proficiency score, uh, or metric at River Park, you're looking at draft two, I see?
I was looking at draft one, um, as being even more different. Um, I mean, in either case, it doesn't feel significantly different than what we have right now in terms of the disparities and/or the, like, relative integration, and, uh, I think we, that was a goal, was changing that, so, um, it just, yeah, it's sitting next to other zones, um, that have really different proficiency levels.
That was also part of the, to the point of, um, balancing proficiency scores, that was part of the draft one recommendation of Collins Ridge going to Pathways.
Okay, but then we didn't want a satellite, um, there.
Correct, maintaining a satellite, yes.
Okay. Um, yeah, I just wonder other parts of that, as you're looking, moving forward, other parts of the New Hope Zone, for example, like in the second scenario, it's at a hundred and seven percent capacity, and River Park is at sixty-eight percent capacity, so I, I, I feel like there's some things that could be done there potentially.
And you, you'll notice too, the, uh, two schools, looking at, uh, both versions of the capacities here for the scenario utilization, the two schools with the lowest capacity, or, excuse me, the lowest utilizations, are the two that will need the most space for new residential developments.
Mm-hmm.
So that's Eflin Cheeks with the developments in Meben, and then in this scenario draft two, uh, we would have Collins Ridge going to River Park.
Okay.
And, um, just, mobile units aren't counted in this, right? So we've, we have mobile units at Eflin, and we have mobile units in many of our schools that's not counted.
Correct.
In available capacity.
Correct.
What about transportation impacts? Have you looked at transportation at all?
Transportation is currently involved in the process of, of reviewing these scenarios and looking specifically for, uh, any sort of issues that would be related to student safety. For example, buses needing to turn around in places that aren't safe, that, that sort of situation, so transportation is actively involved.
I'm, my question is, is a little different, so if I look at the Eflin, the way you wedged Eflin Cheeks, for example, um, we have now students coming from the western end of the county, driving past Eflin Cheeks to go to Central or Grady Brown, so are we asking, are students to spend more time on the bus?
There is a potential for that. We have the capability now to explore scenarios related to that, but it's a, it would be as part of, uh, technical support that would come through TIM support, uh, that's not something that we have direct involvement with, but that is a, an option, or depending on what staff time is available for transportation, that can also be explored using the, the software that you're currently using.
Yeah, that, I mean, that was my understanding, was that understanding route times and things like that would be part of this process, so when, at what point does that get considered when we're drawing the maps?
That would be a separate discussion.
Okay. Right, I think that that is important to understand, you know, we already have very long routes in some cases, and, um, there's only so much we can do about that, but if they were made even longer, that would be, that would be tough.
Have you met with transportation, and have they seen these maps, um, so that that can be, start being part of the discussion?
Absolutely. Our internal transportation, though, that Tom's referring to TIM's as part of his organization, but our internal transportation, JR is evaluating those, he did, definitely received these when he's released, were, were released.
Okay.
To provide us some feedback, as he did the first maps as well. So he's, he's, uh, doing these same maps as well.
He's looking at times and how long kids are going to be on buses?
Absolutely, and has, and made suggestions even after the first sets of maps, so he received these at the same time, and is providing some data, some feedback rather, uh, on the, what he's, uh, seen as a result of what these maps represent.
Okay, good, thank you. Anything farther? I, I have, um, on the high school maps, just a crazy question, because, um, with the, the three satellites up at, in the western end of the county that were originally at Cedar Ridge, and now you've taken the whole wedge and putting it to Cedar Ridge. now you've taken the whole wedge and putting it to Cedar Ridge, I guess there's a question about what that's doing to transportation time, and do you look instead at taking at least the two top ones and sending them back to Orange? You know, and what, you know, it just seemed, it seems that we spot zoned those out of Orange because we needed the capacity, but that seems to have changed. So I just don't know if it's smarter for those to be at Orange or at Cedar Ridge. Again, transportation is a big deal.
Absolutely, absolutely. So that is...
Oh, sure. It was actually Transportation's request to get rid of those satellites there originally.
Oh, I understand. So now, should those satellites go back to Orange High School? Or should the two, not all three, but the two?
Yeah, it's the feedback waiting to receive back to see what the, what the new maps represent.
Okay. And if we wanted to have, in the past, board members, there was maps that were more easily tweakable. So I mean, just looking at the elementary maps, I wondered if we moved the border between River Park and Central to Chertan Street. And if you were south of Chertan Street, or is, I guess it's west of Chertan Street, you would go to Central, and if you were east of Chertan Street, you would go to River Park. Just making up, it's one example. We wanted to not create so much capacity at Efflin Cheeks because we knew a new elementary school was coming. These, how, is there a process where we can have a little bit more dynamic evaluation? That's been done in the past with prior boards, where the board would have literally a three-hour work session, working with TIMs and the maps, and see how changes affect things. And I know Sarah and Will, when you guys did this back in 2019, did you have any process like that?
That did not happen.
Okay, because it happened when we did the Cedar Ridge, when we opened Cedar Ridge. That was 20 years ago, but they actually modeled it. But how do we do that? How do we create a process where the board can have a little bit more understanding of these decisions and how, what the options are? And I don't know if other board members want to have a little bit more say in these options, or if you wanted to hear exactly everything, we'd like to see.
I mean, I'll say that I'm not a huge fan of board members getting in a room and moving a little line, a little bit of a ways, because I think that has happened in the past, and I think it's probably not the most impartial way to do it, let's say. Like, I do, I think the, being able to see how things change if you move things is helpful, but yeah, I think that's not my favorite process.
Well, when I look at these maps, the thing, again, Efflin, if we imagine a new elementary school, that's great, but seeing these schools that end up, especially New Hope, but they end up with over 100% capacity, you know, I mean...
It doesn't work.
I'm sorry, is Pathways at 100, and New Hope is at, and one is 88%? I guess I'm just not sure that we have a model that works yet, and I don't know how to, what we need to get there.
Yes, ma'am.
Somewhat in response to that, but I mean, I feel like our job as a board is to make sure the process that we commit to, you know, has the right priorities, and then that we oversee that it's been followed. And my main concern is that, for a variety of reasons, we didn't have as much early engagement from a broad community committee as we intended to and laid out. And so, that's my main concern, rather than, you know, me and other board members getting to look at some of those specific pieces. I think if we had had a broader representation earlier in the process, I'd have more confidence in how everything progressed.
We are going to have to add some time on here in a few minutes if we...
A motion to extend an extra 10 minutes?
Okay.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions, or are we, what, go ahead, Mr. Atherton.
I did have one question. And one of the things we had asked for was to see how our demographics shifted through these different options. When could we expect to see that data, and that data to be shared with the committees as well?
We'll be able to share that with the board shortly. We did receive that data from ORIS. We'll be able to share that administrative copy soon.
All right. And one other question I had is proximity model? I mean, it's, several people have pointed it out, is that Efflin Cheeks isn't even in the zone, that it, it's in the Central, the school physically is in Central's versus its own. Was that on purpose?
Unfortunately, Mr. Atherton, if you go back in, there's a new map that was put in there that was accurate. The initial map was uploaded incorrectly.
Okay, okay. So there's, yeah, I printed this, right when y'all gave us the data, I printed it out. So there's a new version?
Yes, it's currently showing now.
Okay, thank you so much.
So what do you suggest to deal with these, and depending on the scenarios, a couple of schools that are being redistricted with over 100% capacity, and the transportation? And how do we get to maps that we can look at and feel, and, you know, I think Carrie's point about more public input, we had hoped to have maps and then actually sit down with impacted communities and spend more time with them. So how does that happen?
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, as you look at the remaining information sessions from the public there through the month of November, roughly seven, we have also our reassignment committee that will be approaching, meeting Ashley on Wednesday as well, that is scheduled to get to further feedback. Ultimately, in terms of the capacity numbers, we've identified and be able to share both Sappo and the adjusted, so that everyone could see, you know, how the maps were developed as a result of the capacity numbers that were, that are being reflected to make decisions on. But again, ultimately, it's going to be based on those numbers, as well as additional feedback from you as the board, reassignment committee, as well as the community, to bring back additional feedback for additional maps.
Okay. Anything else?
So do we just, I would love to get clear on whether there's, like, a majority of the board who is in favor of not going with a map that has some schools at over 100% capacity in the, like, adjusted utilization?
Yes, and the Sappo, the adjusted utilization is the utilization, the Sappo utilization is not, which is why we asked, right? But I'm not comfortable just moving maps through the public that haven't been settled, and that we don't know if the transportation works.
What do other board members?
Well, I'm not in favor of moving children into a building that's over 100% capacity, because that's what we're trying to get away from in many schools. So I'm not in favor of doing that. So whatever we need to do to tweak that, I guess, would be the best way to say that.
Does that mean we need to slow this down?
What is your timeline, Mr. Foster?
Timeline continues right now, currently, like I said, with getting, obtaining those feedback and progressing to December, ideally. That keeps us in alignment with the, you know, January, February transfer timeline and things such as that. As a result, something else I'll add is in terms of, you know, the capacity, as you said, the adjusted capacity, again, continuing to work with ORIS to see what we can do along those lines with how those maps were developed, see if the capacity would lower.
Can that be done by December, January, to move these children around from these schools that are over 100% capacity?
Yeah, so we have to work with ORIS to see if we can get that done.
And I think if we model it with Meben, I think that's, you know, even the report, your report says that our adjusted capacity puts us at capacity. And so that's why if we model, if one of the scenarios was, here's what it looks like, if we had a school that...
Well, that, to me, that's not even in the picture right now, because we don't have a school in Meben.
I understand. It's just a scenario. It's just a scenario to see what happens with that.
But we need to solve the problems that we have right now with overcapacity in schools and...
So, so just say, moving from 110% capacity at Efflin Cheeks to instead having 116% capacity at Pathways is not a solution, right?
No, that's what we just talked about, moving those that are over 100% capacity, but I'm not sure that, I mean, it's nice to see how much things would change if we had a school in Meben, but even if we got a school in Meben, we're looking at two to three years before that happens, but we have to deal with the capacity that we've got right now to make sure that our kids are not in overpopulated schools.
Yeah, so maybe the different way to look at it is, it looks like you all did very aggressive redistricting to free up space for the Meben growth. Is that, is that correct?
I would say that's a fair assessment, yes.
Right, so if we knew in a few years, and we don't know this for sure, but if we, if one scenario is in a few years, maybe it's three, maybe it's four, we know a school is coming in Meben, would you relax the redistricting that you do on Efflin? And that would ease the impact on the other schools?
As far as doing some sort of staggered scenario, when talking about doing redistricting as a shorter term, and then also doing reassignment with the opening of a new school, I would just caution the board to be aware of the potential to reassign the same students multiple times.
Yes, yes, bad. So, yeah, so, again, it looks like you took a huge chunk of the northern part of Efflin and sent it to Central, and a huge part of the southern part of Efflin and sent it to Grady Brown. And so, and we opened up a new school, they're all going to get changed again. So the question is, should you leave more kids in Efflin and leave them alone? That's the essence of the question.
If we assume that a new school would be coming online, I would anticipate that would be the direction. Yes.
And that would relax, that would alleviate the pressure on some of the other schools.
But, I mean, that's a scenario that maybe you can look at, but we don't know. We have no idea that we're going to get a school in Efflin.
I just wonder if, rather than drawing it out as a whole scenario, we just say we don't need to hold it at 83% utilization, but like, going up to 90% would be fine, or some, you know what I mean? Like, that's...
That gets to the same place. That gets to the same place, yes.
Okay.
Are we clear, Mr. Foster, on what we need?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
I'm not so sure about that. Let me try and state what I think you want, and be as blunt as I can. Go back to the maps, don't show any scenarios that are 100% or more, knowing that you are now enabled to increase enrollment at Efflin. And while you're at it, try and address proximity. And they may both serve the same purpose.
And while you're at it, try to address student achievement, which was the top priority for everyone.
But, but I think you're seeing that there's not a great difference. You've pointed out one school, but I think we're losing the ability to lean on achievement as much as we want in order to get under 100% and tighten up proximity with short bus rides.
Right.
We're running out of levers to pull.
And I think looking at that one school and its, you know, proximity to other zones could be helpful.
Yeah, I think you heard that as well. Now, given just hitting another button once you change your parameters, and assuming that it only takes about two hours, how long will it take to get a new set of probably very different maps?
That's something we can certainly turn around before your next meeting. The major just caveat that I need to mention is, you have, using the adjusted capacities, you have so little wiggle room, for lack of another term. If you lock in all of these schools being at 98, 99%, within just a couple of years after that, those, at least two of those schools are going to be overcrowded. Mathematically, to my knowledge, there isn't another way to do it. So if the objective is to create a scenario that achieves that, I just need to be clear on what's feasible.
But if we also modify our policy that says every year, the board will revisit assignments, which districts do, and so they don't get into the massive, then at least the community would know, okay, we're back on the board every year. So that's another way to think about it.
And if I understand, you know, that would also have a, less, less of an impact on our families overall, but it would put us in the every year we...
Did that get at what I thought I heard you guys talking about?
Yes, Sarah.
In terms of an assignment.
Ms. Doyle has a question that I won't hard to be able to ask.
Yep. I just want to say I'm not, I don't feel good about how we've gotten here. I feel like we haven't had the community engagement. We haven't had the, you know, a quarter of our population is Hispanic families, and we haven't had the engagement. You know, I feel like we can't, like, catch that up after these changes are made. And so I don't know that we can fix this on this timeline and do it well.
May I ask Carrie a question? Carrie, do you see the community engaging before the maps are updated, or after the maps are updated?
I think they need to be earlier. I feel like, I don't know that we can correct it now, because I feel like they're kind of, we're working with what's already been done. But I think they were supposed to have been more engaged earlier on, and if we don't really have an authentic time period where that's happening, we're not going to make our deadline.
I'm not sure we can make our deadline by December. That's my concern.
Yeah.
And have engagement, have it right, and be ready to roll. I'm not sure that's going to happen, but that's just...
That's where I am. I'm really happy to...
But if you all can go and do what we have asked, and what Dr. Merrill so succinctly said, and then come back, you think you can be back in December?
Yes, absolutely. Yes.
Okay.
So would the community engagement happen after that, or...
I don't think it can happen before, because they've got to change the maps. I mean, and Mr. Foster, you tell me if I'm wrong.
You're absolutely right. And I know he says by December, I mean, it could be before, ideally, you know, we can get them going and be able to obtain feedback from the new version of the map that we are suggesting at this time.
Okay.
And let's, if that's okay with everybody else, they go and do that, and then we look at it again and see where we're going to go and what we have to extend out.
Mm-hmm. Possibly. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Foster.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to extend to discuss graduation and the other policy?
Yes, we do, unfortunately.
Can I motion to extend for 10 minutes?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Good morning, board. Sorry. So graduation is vastly approaching, and we find ourselves in a little bit of a predicament, where we are fighting against the tradition of a day or the tradition of a place. And unfortunately, where we are at this point in time, they don't coincide. I've sent you three options that we've sort of really negotiated through and tried to navigate. None of them are the most ideal that we have, but this is kind of where we are at this moment. So I know there's questions, discussions... So I know there's questions, discussions, and we're on a time crunch, so I'm open.
Well, I'm going to bring up one thing that I asked Dr. Merrill today, and Dr. Merrill said, I think he said that it had been discussed. Could we have it in Chapel Hill if we did it earlier in that week?
So it's been discussed, and the problem we kind of run into is the 10-day testing window that we're still sort of in when it comes to schools being in, getting staff out of the building, and then the fee that you're going to pay for Chapel Hill. So I need to remind us that the fee that we have been paying has, because we've been in conjunction with Chapel Hill. If we are saying that we are okay with not being in conjunction with them, you're looking at close to about $65,000 to $70,000. That's a big ticket, and it is a barrier when you think about the day. Now, I do know we could not get on the 5th and the 6th for the Dean Smith Center. We could potentially get on the 4th. As your favorite chief equity officer, I called several times today, begged, pleaded, promised that Andre and I would play a pickup game in front of them. And they're guaranteed, y'all gotta laugh, it's almost midnight, come on, you got me here this late. They are possibly holding the 4th and potentially the 12th, but we find ourselves in some very interesting...
Which is tizzy. The 4th is tizzy.
And so from just conversations with the schools, it's extremely tough because what you're going to have to do then is get schools out early on the 4th so staff can leave and get to the Dean Smith Center.
Let me ask this question. $60,000 is a big price tag for that.
Say about 65, 70.
65,000 to 70,000. How much is it going to cost us? We have it on the football field and we're streaming and doing all that we need to do with the technology to get it out so everybody can see it.
$59,000. So your options really are the Dean Smith Center, that is $40,000 if we do it on the 14th. The problem with that is staffing concerns and then any families that have made plans. It is a week after we've got enough schools, graduation. Now, part of that is, and you know, I do want to lift up, we need to also really have a conversation tonight briefly about next year, let's go ahead and put that in the books. Our partnership with Chapel Hill for next year is probably in question because their calendar alludes for five additional days at the end of the year because they're getting out for the winter break on the 15th, where we're getting out on the 20th. So they've tied their days to the end, which puts their graduation to that kind of Saturday. So I would argue that we may find ourselves in this situation again. I don't want to be, so I'd like to go ahead tonight, solidify what we'll think for next year. I'll get back on the phone first thing in the morning. I've become good friends with a lot of these venues just from our persistent phone calls. We can go ahead and get that in the books for next year. And then considering after that, try to see if we can't get on the same calendar with Chapel Hill to continue a better partnership. So the $40,000 if we do the 14th, the $29,000 is the Meben Arts, and then the $59,000 is on our fields.
Excuse me, Mr. Williams?
Yes, ma'am.
If we look at doing graduation on the 14th, would we have to consider, I guess, maybe like temporary contracts for staff? Because they would be out, correct?
Yes, ma'am, so our principals are phenomenal, but I would argue the best of principals would not be able to get any staff to come two, three days after they've been released on the first Friday to begin summer to do graduation without some sort of financial incentive.
Go ahead, Ms. Foster.
Just to put out preferences to like keep this moving. I think there are too many problems with changing the date. Like there's people on vacations, there's people flying in to see their grandkid graduate or whatever. You know, there's a lot of challenges, I think, with changing the date. And my understanding is the Meben Arts Center is a smaller venue, right? Like, would there be capacity constraints there versus if we did it at the schools?
Yeah, so if you do that at the Meben Arts Center, it is capacity constraints, there's 1,000. So I know some of the question that Mr. Hauser had said to 400 graduates was incorrect. We have 265 for Orange High and 232 for Cedar Ridge, so I'm not sure about that.
Is that right?
100% right, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
So we'd be able to have, each graduate would be able to have three people come?
No, so, my mathematics, if we went to Orange High School, you're looking at two. If we went to, because you can't do, it ends up being like a point of a person, and we can't have a point of a person. So you're looking at two. If you're looking at Cedar Ridge, you're looking at three tickets per person.
Is that, wait, are you talking about indoor?
Yeah.
Meben Arts.
Meben Arts, I'm sorry, that was naming the schools, yeah, Meben Arts.
Oh, you're talking about at Meben Arts.
At Meben Arts.
Orange would be able to invite two guests.
Two guests, Cedar Ridge, three.
No, I don't think that works either. I feel like the only option of these options that works is at the schools outside with a rain date, I guess.
The rain date, we set for the 10th with understanding that if it rains that weekend and the first available date we could get into, we would. And from conversations with our vendors, the chair rentals and streaming services, as long as we did not cancel, we would not lose any funds. That was their biggest deal, was just don't cancel.
So, I mean, I guess, like, given that, like, I'm kind of leaning towards option three as the best of these options.
Ms. Doyle?
Yeah, I think protecting the date is most important. My experience is the Dean Dome graduations and the field graduations are both pretty lovely for families. I was surprised to learn how expensive it is to have it in the outdoors at the, at Orange High School. But it's a good point you're making that this might be, you know, an ongoing problem. So the 40,000 that we've been able to do for the Dean Smith Center might not be sustainable anyway or consistent?
The only way to make that consistent, if we're protecting the, if you're going to protect the date, it's not consistent. If you are protecting the location, then it would require us to add in and to sort of match Chapel Hill's calendar. When I spoke with them earlier, a few weeks ago, they had just released their graduation date out kind of right prior to ours, and I begged and pleaded if they could join me to, you know, play a little hardball, but they were cool not playing hardball with Chapel Hill. So I guess we're Clemson fans and not Carolina fans in the first place. Still almost midnight.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So, the morning versus the afternoon? So it's a half day, some of our staff has seniors that are graduating, so they would need coverage in their classes, some of the parking, you know, so is there a reason it was recommended originally in the morning versus the afternoon?
You mean, no, other than just trying to space it out so we could get to the locations? Other than that, that was about it.
And the heat.
And heat index.
Yeah, I prefer afternoon.
Well, I think that was, part of that came back was, and I'm not mistaken, when there was a graduation outside around 11:00 or 12:00 o'clock, it was extremely hot. And so considering that Orange High this year is in the morning in the black robes, now that I'm thinking a little more clearly this late, we did look to try to do that in the morning for heat index. And so the idea would be Orange High in the morning, particularly maybe 8:30, early enough where we still have a nice sunrise, but it's not hot. Then partnership in between there and then Cedar Ridge in the evening. If we push back, I mean, we could, but that puts a tight timeframe on you all getting there. And it just becomes tight. So if we push it back and we have to consider weather in the summertime in North Carolina on June 7th, it can get hot real quick, so just consideration for weather.
It is very hot on the field at Orange High School in the mornings. Well, do we want to go ahead and make a motion that we go with the graduations at the schools here and use the football fields?
So I'd just like to say one more thing, we checked several of venues. There is nothing, this is just for future reference, there is nothing that's going to have capacity to fit an unlimited number of ticket holders other than the Dean Dome. I checked the Carolina Theater, their capacity is at 900. Another theater was like at 1,000, so there really is no other venue. Duke would be the other place, which, so I want to lift up, if we are still considering possibly an inside venue, but they are not allowing graduation this year because of renovations to their campus and their stadium. So if the thought is still protection of the 7th and we do decide tonight that you want to go on the fields for both years, I can still reach out to Duke and try to get on a tentative calendar for next year as an alternative plan. But I would guess the cost is probably not going to be much different than in Carolina's, which is about 65,000 to 70,000.
Go ahead.
Is UNCG a consideration at all? I know it's farther.
So, I did not go much further because of equitable drive for some of our families. I can, but that would be a, that's a drive. Just considering...
It is downtown.
And considering that. The other campus that we did look at was Central, but the parking at Central is also tough. So we find ourselves in kind of a situation one way or the other.
Does Deepak allow graduation?
I didn't go that far. I know Durham is not graduating with Deepak, they're going outside to the memorial stadium. So I did have conversations with them, but their graduations are so spread out. Trying to figure out how we can partner to potentially save some funds and everybody come out on top.
Well, we need to do this year because all of this is getting ready to start being printed and so forth, so...
You know, I just have a quick question on Chapel Hill. Did Chapel Hill move, when did Chapel Hill move their date?
So there's a calendar change. So when we were in calendar step last year, this year they added five additional days into when they would get out for the winter break. So they got out, they're getting out on the 15th instead of...
Got it, so their calendar, this is, this was their...
This is reputation, their calendar move.
This was their planned graduation all along.
So they were, they were, I'm not, before it was always been the Saturday when they get out. This year it happens to be the Saturday when they get out, which is the 14th.
Got it, just trying to, so and syncing up with them, given they're doing that is not...
Which is, I mean, yeah.
So do we need to go ahead and make a motion that we want to have graduation on the football fields at all of our facilities?
I'll make the motion.
Need a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Dr. Moore? And Mr. Atherton?
Aye.
Okay, all right, we're all in favor.
Not to belabor the night, may I ask about next year? Because I don't, I don't want to find us in this position, because I want us to go ahead and start planning now. Or should I just come back at another day when it's not too late?
Let's wait on that.
Works for me.
Okay. Policy 3540, the comprehensive health education program approval. And my computer has died, so I can't get to anything. I did not bring my plug. Didn't think I needed it, didn't know we were going to be here. I got it right here without...
Madam Chair, just to frame this at the board's request, I added a definition section, restructured this policy slightly at the board's request. It's substantively, I think, similar to what was presented before, but restructured to avoid confusion.
Motion to approve, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.